Good afternoon, board members. I want to thank you for taking the time to be here this afternoon for our May Work session. At this point, we have six of our board members here, so we do have a quorum. We have one board member that's running a few moments late, so when she arrives, she'll take her place. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I want to start this afternoon with our invocation. Because Ms. LeBreck's not arrived yet, I'll do that for her, so if you'll join me as we pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity that we can come together to discuss the business of the district today. Father, we do pray that you guide and direct our steps, that as we look to make wise choices for the district and for the students we serve, along with the families and the faculty, that you will bring us wisdom, and that, Father, that we will seek that wisdom in order to make the best decision possible. We just ask that as you gather us here today to do this work, that you'll bless this time together, that you'll let us accomplish our goals for the best of the county. We ask all this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Williams, will you lead us in our pledge?
Yes, everybody stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of our meeting this afternoon is to receive the draft reports for the closure and consolidation studies of Granville Central High School, Wilton Elementary, and Creedmoor Elementary. The way we will conduct this meeting is as staff present these reports, we'll go through the reports. We ask that you keep your comments or questions until the end. You've been provided with information or notepads there to be able to take notes, so you can put your questions down. At that point, we'll go around the table, just as we've done before. We'll start with Dr. McKnight one time. We'll start with Ms. LeBreck another time, then we'll alternate back to Dr. McKnight. At that time, each board member will be given an opportunity to ask clarifying questions or if they have further information that they would like to see answered by the studies. Ms. Shave, our clerk, will be keeping notes on those interactions. And at the end of that time, after each board member's had the opportunity to talk and we've asked clarifying questions, then we will go through that list of questions again, and we, as a board, will decide what questions will go to the staff to be included in the studies for our final draft that we'll receive in June. I want to remind you that today's purpose of our meeting is not to debate this issue, that we will have that opportunity to do that when motions are made, after we have heard from public comment, we've received the final drafts or the final reports, and we'll do that at the end of June. So again, just want to remind you, you have tools there at your seat, that as staff begins to present in just a few moments, that you can write down those clarifying questions for each of those. I do want to take just a few moments to kind of go over where we have been and where we're at. So on April 19th, we had a board work session. The purpose of that work session was to receive our update from our strategic task force committees, and we discussed and approved the timeline that I'm going over now. At our May 3 regular board meeting, which was last, we discussed the school consolidation options, and we directed staff to create or reactivate studies based on board vote, and that's what you have given to you today, are those draft studies. Today's work, as I said, we would receive those studies, we'll discuss them, we'll request any edits, additions to those studies, and then when we finish today, the staff will go about their work over the next couple of weeks, finalizing those studies in preparation for our June 7 board meeting. That June 7 board meeting will review the final studies as presented, and we'll request any final edits. At that point, it would just be edits. We have scheduled two public forums already, if these are necessary, for elementary schools, that'll be June 14th, and that will be at Tar River Elementary School. The following night, June 15th, will be for our middle school and our high schools, and that will also be at Tar River. The staff will present those studies to the public, and we, as a board, will be there to hear the comments from those parents. If you remember how we did that before, that essentially, parents would sign up, they would have up to three minutes to talk, we will stay there as long as it takes that night for the community to be heard. And then on June 29th, we have a special called Board Meeting. We typically have one at the end of June to handle our budget amendments and requests for the end of the fiscal year. We'll handle that first, and then we will launch into final decisions around these studies. That'll be the opportunity where the board debates, they'll discuss with one another, they'll make motions, and then we will hold a vote on the studies. So that is the timeline that you approved at the last board meeting, and so that's how we'll be going through. Just want to remind you where the information comes for consolidation and closing of schools. General Statute 115(c)(72) outlines that local boards of education should have the power and authority to close or consolidate schools located in the same district. One of the things you'll notice in this slide point behind me is there's some words there that are highlighted, study, students, geographical conditions, school enrollment, hardship, cost, and public hearings. Those are all things that have to be part of the process, and so that was taken into consideration as we began to put our studies together, as we began to put that schedule together. So again, that's where we get the authority and the duty to be able to do the work that's in front of us. At the last board meeting, or the last work session, we narrowed down some guiding principles for our reorganization studies. If you remember correctly, we had about 60 principles to start with, and those are all important principles. They are all lenses in which we will look at these studies as we review them. So all of those are important, are still part of the work we're doing. These top four has kind of rose what would be the four that kind of rose to the top school capacity. Geographical concerns such as location, attendance zones, financial concerns such as safety, or I'm sorry, savings, efficiency, economies of scale, human resources, and any unanticipated consequences related to the reorganization decisions. That was one of the items that we talked about, that as we reorganize, sometimes we have unanticipated things that come down the line that we need to think ahead of and address. Again, we're trying to make it that the work we're doing now is a work that will be lasting. It's not something we come back and have to deal with the next school year or the next school year. So at this point, we are ready to move into our studies. Do any board members or staff members have any questions before we get started? All right, seeing none. We will begin with the first draft, I believe is Granville Central first. Is that which one we're doing first?
That's your pleasure, Mr. Chairman. In the, in board docs, it's listed Creedmoor, Wilton, Granville Central.
Okay, then let's do it in that order.
Okay.
All right, so we'll start with the revised and re-presented study for Creedmoor Elementary. You'll find that in your package, I believe it's towards the back of your folder. Again, we'll go through each one of these studies one at a time, take notes for that, and then we'll come back to each board member and give you an opportunity to ask clarifying questions or additions. So we'll allow the staff to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Superintendent. So we're going to begin tonight with the study of the proposed closing of Creedmoor Elementary School of the Arts. This was originally presented to the Granville County Board of Education on October 5th, then revised and presented again on October 26, 2020, and then, of course, we're reintroducing it tonight. You'll notice that throughout this document, there are some revisions in blue that were requested after the initial meeting on October 5th. The first page has the table of contents, and all three studies have the same elements within. But before I get started, I would just like to defer to Attorney Dubison, although, Mr. Richardson, you did address the legal context around closure studies, just to see if Attorney Dubison had anything to add.
Sure, as you said, Mr. Richardson covered it fairly well, that we're operating under 115(c)(72), which says if you're going to close or consolidate a school, that you would do two things, have a study and have a public hearing. You do not have to follow that same procedure just to relocate a school, but anytime that you're going to result in eliminating one school number essentially, reducing the number of schools, you would go through that process. And so, one of the things that you'll decide tonight is which public hearings you would like to go ahead and schedule as part of this, so.
Thank you. So I'll start first with the history of Creedmoor Elementary School of the Arts. I won't read verbatim, but I'll just kind of hit the highlights. The current school campus was constructed, the main part, in 1975, right there in Creedmoor. And really, it just considered, consisted of that main building, and as many of you know, it's almost identical to the main building at Butner Elementary, because they were both built around the same time on sort of that same basic blueprint. But then, in 2000, they completed a lower-grade wing, which houses younger students, younger grade levels, music classrooms, and of course, a new gymatorium. Then in 2005, another separate building was built, a two-story building, and this time for upper grades. So it's adjacent to the South Granville High School campus, as you all know, and it's just two miles away from Holly's campus. So a nice little photo of the original Creedmoor that we were able to find back in 1925, which was not at the same site. But again, here's just an aerial photo. You can see in this one that was taken about 10 years ago, there were a number of mobile units in the back of the school, sort of on the left side of that photograph. That was at a time when enrollment was really high at the school. Page four has a more recent aerial shot that shows the school without the mobile units. So moving on to page five, this is the enrollment summary, going back 10 years, and it's gradually declined over that time. At its peak in 2010-11, there were 565 students, and then that following year, Tar River Elementary School was built, and all of the southern area attendance lines were redrawn around that time. So essentially, what happened was it shifted the attendance zones to the east for all of the southern elementary schools, and sort of spread them out a little bit more. Also, you'll note in 2014-15, Creedmoor was designated a choice school for their arts program. Page six just shows a bar chart of the same data, that sort of gradual decline in enrollment. And then at the bottom of that page, there's data about the choice program. As of the beginning of this school year, there were 14 students participating in the choice program, and there it's broken down by grade level, and the following page shows the schools from which they came, the attendance zones for those students that attend Creedmoor for the choice program. And these numbers have varied over the past six years. So page eight, nine, and 10 are all the legal factors, which I will skip over, because I believe our chairman and attorney have covered it just fine. But that takes us to the factors that we're going to consider, and the first of those tonight is finance and budget. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Day.
Good evening. As required by law, this study must include the cost of providing additional school facilities in the event of such closing or consolidation. In addition, the study includes a financial analysis in any potential savings. So refer to page 11 of the printed copy, it's page 12 of the PDF. The financial impact of the closure of Creedmoor, there are no anticipated costs of closing Creedmoor, as the students from Creedmoor could be absorbed into the existing elementary school facilities. Dr. Winborn will go through this later in the presentation. There are potential cost savings associated with the consolidation of schools. If you would then flip, refer to Appendix 1, it's on page 31 of the printed copy, or it's on page 32 of the PDF, it's the two-page legal size document. This is the more detailed information about the cost and the potential savings. It includes the representation of the total cost of the school, ongoing cost, and anticipated savings. And this schedule is broken into two sections, the current personnel are at the top section with the associated cost. The 1920 school operating cost are on the bottom section to get a look at the cost for a full year. So I'll start with the personnel section at the top of the document. A description of each position is listed with a column for the amount provided by the state based on ADM or the school. The third column is the additional cost for those particular positions, which could be additional state and/or local dollars above and beyond what is funded based on ADM. The next column is the total current cost of those positions, so it's the prior two columns added together. The next few columns are based on discussions with the HR department and review of the state formulas tied to student numbers. This is an analysis of the anticipated ongoing positions and associated dollars after consolidation. And then the final columns to the right are position reductions and net potential consolidation savings. The financial savings estimates include a reduction of 14.49 positions with a net potential savings and operating budget of $659,100 in personnel and for the operating and child nutrition of $39,119 for personnel. So Mr. Perry will cover the human resource implications in more detail later in the presentation. The lower section of this appendix includes operating costs for the school in 1920. The instructional operating cost would follow the students and be ongoing. The facility costs have been reflected as a savings, this is assuming that the Board of Education would not maintain ownership of the building. The total potential consolidation savings for the operating cost is $146,819. Then in the bottom right corner of the Appendix A, it's page 22, you see the total potential savings of $845,038, which includes $39,119 for child nutrition and $805,919 for the operating budget. So kind of flipping back, if you want to look at an overview of this, you can turn back to page 11, it's page 12 of the PDF. The total current annual cost for the school, $4.1 million, $4,163,936. Of these costs, we anticipate $3,210,810 as ongoing cost, they would continue. The one unique school-based funding formula is for the school principal position. We do receive state funding for the principal salary and benefits based on having the school. So the elimination of the school would eliminate that state funding. So that's a reduction of $108,088, so for a net potential annual savings of $845,038. And I'll note that $39,000 of that is for the child nutrition fund. I also would just remind the board that the 21-22 budget proposal submitted to the county reflected using fund balance of $635,000 to balance the budget, and it also reflected having positions paid from limited-time federal funds of $912,000. So savings from any of these studies could first be used to solve these existing financial issues. I'll now turn it over to Jamar Perry for the human resources section.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. McLean. At this time, we'll talk about the human resource aspects of the school closure study. Staffing for schools is primarily determined by the average daily membership of students. It is different from the attendance rate of pupils, which measures the number of students in the building on any given day. If you take a look on page 12, we give you how that allotment formula is actually designated, which means grades one, two, and three, beginning with kindergarten, with one to 19, one to 17 for first grade, our grades two and three, one to 18, and with grades four through eight, please note that there's no class size limitation for students in grades four through eight. If you note that these teaching positions are not always used for classroom positions, but they sometimes can be used for the staffing of an elective teacher, such as your art, your music, foreign language. Moving forward, Creedmoor Elementary currently has 17 classroom teaching positions, six grade levels of grades K through five, that's one PE teacher, one music teacher, one art teacher, a reading teacher, and they also contract with a professional dance instructor. They were providing dance instruction for one day per week for a total of 21 teachers. On page 14, you'll notice our current class size information for grades K through five, and the average number of students that are involved in those particular classes. Staffing for the EC department or exceptional children's program is funded under a separate budget source, so any staffing outside of the state allotment is used for additional program enhancement, academically and intellectually gifted, ESL, pre-kindergarten, and EC are paid from different dollars. The school does receive one principal position, and funding for this position is based on the base salary only and does not include the local salary differential, which is paid locally. So Creedmoor has one principal and currently one assistant principal. Assistant principal allotments are based on 985 students in the building, so this, the school supplements the AP staffing with local funds. The school has one instructional support position for every 211 students, and there's one counselor at that school, Creedmoor Elementary. Other certified staff include one reading teacher, and that position is covered through Title I of federal funding. School-based staff include teacher assistants, office staff, data managers, custodians. These are not allowed, allotted, excuse me, enough school-based staff and to fill these positions, so you would have to utilize local funding for those positions. The school has one receptionist, one data manager, a part-time bookkeeper, and three custodians. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Michael Myrick, who will provide information on curriculum and instruction.
Thank you. The section in blue, Mr. Perry just reviewed that, so I will skip down to the table. One, the student support services. This just shows the number of students by support services that are in those programs at the school. All of our elementary schools have access to the same core curriculum and assessment resources. Creedmoor has continued to improve their academic progress performance, as you would note in the chart below on page 18. They have met growth of the last five of the last six years. Quick description of their choice program. Creedmoor Elementary School of the Arts, it's the elementary school of choice. School was among the first in the district to implement a choice program. They are part of the A-plus schools in North Carolina, and if you would just skip down to the blue section, please. The merging and implementing, implementing choice programs at another school, the A-plus school program can be replicated slash moved to another school. Implementation at another school requires the school to apply, and once approved, the school will become a member of the A-plus school network. The school staff would be required to undergo the initial five-day professional development provided by the A-plus school network. The professional development cost depends on the number of staff, but there are possible grant opportunities available through A-plus schools to offset the training cost. In the 2019-20 school year, the cost for 27 staff members was $5,000. School requested and received funding for the full amount. There is no recurring cost to the district, including training for new teachers and ongoing training to administrators and select staff members. A-plus school pays expenses associated with the training, substitute teachers, travel, and lodging if needed. Now at this time, I will turn it back over to Dr. Winborn.
Thank you, Dr. Myrick. So under infrastructure and operations, first to talk about the facility itself. The campus has just over 80,000 square feet of indoor space. It's one of our medium-sized elementary schools, and it sits on almost 20 acres. Currently, there are four vacant classrooms at Creedmoor Elementary School, and a few other areas on the campus that are being used for other purposes, non-classroom educational activities. So if Creedmoor Elementary School were closed, the students could be reassigned across the other four existing southern area elementary schools. And then, right there, you can see the rough distance between them, Creedmoor to Mount Energy, about two and a half miles, Creedmoor to Tar River, just over seven, Creedmoor to Wilton, six and a half miles, and Creedmoor to Butner, just over six miles. So, you know, in thinking about combining, merging students to other schools, this chart shows the surplus capacity. So if Creedmoor were closed, between the four remaining elementary schools, you have almost 900 seats or available spaces for students to be transferred. So I'll also add that in 2017-18, a study was commissioned by ORED, ITRA, and that chart is on page 21, and that indicated that Creedmoor, in fact, was one of the schools that projected some net growth. Any red on that chart on page 21 showed areas where they anticipated additional students would be coming. But again, that was, that data is almost three, four years old, and as you all know, you've heard from, from different people with experts and Seguassa and local municipal leaders, there seems to be some question about that still. As far as capital outlay needs, as you all know, we had the mold outbreak, that was one of two schools that received a lot of work. In the summer of 2018, the whole HVAC system was renovated at a cost of 1.2 million. Again, that was part of that 15 million that the county commissioners provided. Also, we have had major roof replacements, replacements on all of the roof surfaces at that campus, all three buildings, and that was at a cost of nearly a million dollars. So those were some huge upgrades that were needed to that facility, but there's still more work that needs to be done there, and our master facility plan has about just over a million dollars worth of need over the next five years. About a little more than half of that is just miscellaneous items, mostly in the main building, the 1975 building, related to windows, doors, locks, hardware, and some bathroom upgrades that are needed. We're also going to need some, some work on the driveway and the asphalt surfaces and the parking lots and things like that. Additionally, we have two HVAC chillers that will be nearing their end of life in the next five years, so we'll have to keep an eye on those. So over the next 10 years, we're projecting a little over a million dollars worth of need at that, at that campus. But overall, the major facility, you know, the major systems of the facility, they're in sound working condition, and the campus is not in the same sort of sense of jeopardy that it was before when we had that mold outbreak. It's in a lot better shape. Air quality reports also show no fungal amplification or altered indoor ecology. In other words, no mold. And that was, we actually, I just received unofficial reports back this week and from our spring air quality testing, that it's looking very good there again, so I'm pleased to say. Moving on to page 23, as far as the value of the property, we do not have an official property appraisal from a third party, so all we really have to go on is the tax card, and this is what the, how the county would assess the value, and that's listed at almost $5 million for the campus, the value. Whether or not that reflects actual market value, I can't say. We would need to get experts to do that for us. As far as transportation, and I'm going to use pre-pandemic data here, because this year, our buses have not, this has not been a typical year for them, but pre-pandemic, we were running five buses at Creedmoor, and we served about 220 kids, and they traveled 151 miles or for about eight hours a day total. That's morning and evening routes combined. So, you know, if the school were closed, again, there's some sort of multiple scenarios for how this might work and how we could reduce the number of buses, but if you look on page 24, that is a diagram of our county and the elementary attendance zones only. Creedmoor is the pink one on the bottom of the page, and then you can see that one option might be to just have that attendance zone absorbed by Butner, which is to the left, and Mount Energy, which is the green one just above it, and maybe just, you know, have those two schools absorb the children. That might be more efficient when it comes to bus That might be more efficient when it comes to bus routing. However, there's a lot of ways to do this. It depends on, on the preference of the board, and we would probably want to get some expert assistance with this from the folks at ITRA, which is a group out of NC State, the Institute for Transportation Research and Education, and they assist school districts with, you know, drawing attendance lines. And they change, you know, depending on where people live at any given time and where the students are enrolled in school. So these, these sort of demographics shift quite frequently, so we'd want to do this, we wouldn't want to like plan right now what the attendance zones would be a year from now. That would be premature, I think. But in any case, if you go to page twenty-five, you can see those arrows point to the approximate location of each school campus within the attendance zone, and you can almost draw a horizontal line across that map connecting the dots. So, you know, there are various ways that you could slice this pie. You could take the five current attendant zones and turn them into four sort of vertical slices if you wanted, or you could sort of use these interlocking puzzle pieces like they have here. So there's two options, really, again, just focus on adjusting Butner and Mount Energy or redraw the whole southern end, and there are pros and cons for both of those. Also, you do need to take into account the impact of choice programs as well, because we have a lot of families that aren't going to school in their attendance zone. Child nutrition, currently, there are four full-time child nutrition staff members working there. We believe that, really, that the manager could be eliminated, and three of those four would just sort of follow the children to wherever they go, whichever site they end up being at, because those schools will need help in preparing the meals and serving the meals for those children. And then there's a, on the bottom of page twenty-six, it's just some information about the latest free and reduced lunch data. It's somewhere around eighty-six percent. If you look at the, those are, those are counts that are in that chart, but that represents for two thousand twenty about eighty-six percent. Finally, school culture and the impact on the community. Of course, you know, Creedmoor's got a proud history. It's a community school. It's one of a, you know, only a handful of elementary schools that are in a city, in a town. The, as I said earlier, the ORED study indicates that there's growth projected in the city over the next ten years, but, you know, generally speaking, the impact on culture and the community, that's a very subjective thing to discuss, and I think it depends on, on who you ask. So I will just sort of leave that one for board members to mull over. As a summary of sort of the entire study, we, we can make some broad conclusions. Number one, there is a, a potential cost savings to the school district, and the numbers that Ms. Day pointed out are annual costs, correct? That dollar amount was eight fifty, I'm sorry, but that, that's a recurring annual cost savings that would occur year over year. It's not a one-time savings. Of course, if we were to sell the facility, we could get a one-time receipt for that. Of course, we could increase the efficiency of our staffing, which, as we know, would provide increases in academic opportunity for children, more electives, smaller, possibly smaller class sizes, more concentration of our services. And then there's really minimal or no cost related to the facilities. I mean, we don't have to do anything. We don't have to renovate or build or add on to anything. And then finally, that, that last point is, is really for the board to determine. And then the timeline, of course, Mr. Richardson's already covered that this evening. So that concludes our presentation of the Creedmoor Elementary School of the Arts study.
Thank you, staff, for that presentation. Ms. Shave, are you ready to keep up with the questions? Okay. Again, what we'll do is we'll go around the table. This is your opportunity to ask clarifying questions. Ask clarifying questions. Are you good now? Okay. This is your opportunity to ask clarifying questions of the staff now, or as, as you are making additions or questions to be included in the study, Ms. Shave will be writing those down, and once we've gone around the table, then we, as a board, will decide what to include in those studies. So again, we said that we would start with Dr. McKnight, so Dr. McKnight, questions you have?
Yeah.
Can you make sure you use your microphone?
Use the microphone. One question I was digging through, looking for is, what is the optimal capacity at Creedmoor? I know it's listed for some of the other schools, but didn't see it for Creedmoor.
I can pull that up, if you'll just give me a minute.
All right, so we need to write that down, Ms. Shave, to include.
Mr. Chairman, would you like for me to just record that or try to seek that information as we go?
Let's go ahead and just record it, so that way we can include it in the study.
Okay.
Dr. McKnight?
That's all I have for this study.
Okay. All right, Ms. Williams?
I had a question about the school choice. I noticed that there are fourteen that come to the school that are out of district, and I was wondering if we could include the, since it's been a choice program, has that number been stable or has it increased, decreased, and how that would look?
So am I understanding historical numbers on the choice program?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All right, other questions?
Creedmoor has some self-contained classes in ECP, and I'm going to assume, might get me in trouble, that there may be some special needs that might need to be in a classroom, and I would like to know if the other schools would be able to accommodate those self-contained classes without any issues if the school were to be closed.
Okay. So to understand your question, are there, can self-contained classes be handled by another school if they were moved there?
And if so, would there be any additional cost to that?
Additional cost involved.
Because of equipment and supplies and modifications.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Let me just, yeah, I was looking at the, I know you showed a couple. Is that good?
If you come a little bit closer. You almost have to eat the mic.
I was looking at the, the map drawn out, and I noticed under the mapping, you know, you show that just if there was consolidation or what have you with regards to Creedmoor Elementary, and then you would redraw the lines again to show what, you know, students would go into other areas. And I believe from what I could see here on the map, how do you, when you start relocating students from other areas or relocating students from, let's say Creedmoor, to the other zones or other elementaries, will they all go to one? You know, will all of those students go into one school, or you're going to redraw it all together, which I was trying to figure out here from this with the elementary schools? And how do you come up with that decision to redraw and decide, you know, what students go where else within the elementary school system close by?
So, based on my reading of board docs for researching these studies in the past, the board has provided direction to the group out of NC State, the Institute for Transportation Educational Research. So they have said, for example, we want to, you know, try to balance where these students are coming from, or we prefer that they stay clustered together. So you would sort of give them some direction about what you would like to see, and then they would use the data and draw mock attendance zones and get your input, and then they could go back and adjust it as needed. So it's sort of a, a process that would occur. So, you know, again, you, you could take the existing Creedmoor Elementary School zone and only impact the two that are right beside it, or you could decide to sort of redraw the whole southern part. Now, you know, obviously, that, that's going to be more disruptive to more children, but that's something that you would need to sort of help steer their work. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, in a sense, but with regards to that, when we look at something like that, you know, because it, it, you know, I'm looking at the map, and of course, it has all the elementary schools. They're on page twenty-six, and you show all of the elementary schools. Some are very close to each other and all of that, and I know that we're going to be having some public hearings from the public, parents, whatever the case might be. Do, what is, what are your thoughts? You all have gone through this before, but what are your thoughts on the, the parents' consideration of, you know, our location and then having our child to get put in another, you know, what consideration we take with that?
I think public input is going to be very important in that process.
Very important.
Yes, ma'am.
Nice. Thank you.
Any further questions, Ms. Anderson?
No, not right now.
All right. Dr. Holahan, questions?
No. No, just a few. Stan, Dr. Winborn, Butner kind of came up today.
Can you pull your mic a little bit closer to you?
I can't do it.
Butner came up today, kind of, in my mind, out of the, not out of the blue, but we hadn't really talked about it. It would be nice if we could have a little bit of information about students going there and, and that kind of thing, just, you know, something as an update about Butner.
Yes, sir.
All right, second, we talked, there's a lot of information in each one of these about personnel and cost savings. The question that I would like to have answered, and maybe this is it, but anyway, the question I'd like to have answered is, how men, how much, how many of these personnel are locally funded, and how much of the potential savings are state-related funds? Because the truth of the matter to me is, I don't care about anything but how much it's costing us that we have some degree of control over, and the eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars is a great figure, you know, and, but is that for all of the per people locally, or is it ninety percent whatever, whatever? Go ahead, ma'am. Ms. Day, can you kind of speak to that? I think that's page thirty-one.
Yes, yes, on the, if you look at the appendix, so, one of the things that, the pieces of information that were provided that I think is really important to look at is the additional cost above and beyond what the state is providing. And so, on that top, on the personnel, so the first column of, of dollars is the amount provided by the state or the, or a grant based on the ADM or the school. The, the third column, the additional cost, those are additional costs above and beyond what the state is providing, so for those particular positions. And so that information was used to, to look at what the school earns based on ADM and what would be ongoing. So to your point, Dr. Holahan, you're, you're certainly right that a lot of these positions are paid out of state funds, but they're positions that are paid out of state funds that are not funds that we receive because of the number of students that the, that the school has. It's additional state funds. So when we use additional state funds above and beyond what the school earns, those dollars in effect can translate into a savings of, of local dollars, of fund balance. So that total savings amount ultimately can be a savings out of fund balance, just like the decisions that the board has made in the past for Tola and Mary Potter. Those savings, the whole amount of the savings that were reported came off of what we had to spend out of local fund balance, because you have discretion of those state funds. It's, it's state funds that you, that you are allotted, but you, but the Board of Education has discretion over those funds, so if we use those funds efficiently, then it, it translates into not using as much local fund balance.
So what I hear you saving, saying is that we really don't know from year to year what the cost of local funds will be, I'm, I'm talking about teachers and so forth. Local funds will be, depending upon how much local, how many teachers and that kind of thing, and that changes from year to year. But that's okay. I don't know that there's an answer. I would just say that, that perhaps, perhaps there might, there might be, anyway, we'll leave it there, but I, I just am not questioning, I'm just saying that, that is the reality of that, is that clearly what we would save from year to year? And I, and we'll just leave that there because of time, all right? But I understand what you're saying. The next question is, twenty-one teachers at the school, is that, is that what everyone gets in terms of classroom, classroom sizing and that kind of thing, or is that additional funds to pay for the arts program? I'm asking some, oh, well, here's what you, just, just take the question, and if you come up with some information, perhaps that could be helpfully explained the next time we meet, okay? And then, I'm a little bit surprised by the, the five million dollars for the facility. I would think it would be higher than that, but you say we do not have a formal, whatever for that school, is that correct? Estimate?
The five million? I'm sorry, Dr. Holahan.
Didn't you say five million? Around five million?
Property value?
Oh, the property value?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's just the tax card, what the tax card says.
Okay. All right.
I, I do not know if it's worth that. You know, that's fair market value, you know, it's difficult to say.
All right. Okay, thanks. Ms. Day and Mr. Perry, did you understand the question about teachers, to clarify, or do you have more questions related to that?
You asked me how our teachers allocated to that school in a comparison to other schools in the district?
Correct, correct. Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else, Dr. Holahan?
That's good.
That, the answer to that question may be at the top of page thirteen, how those twenty-one teachers are derived. Yes, sir.
I guess what I, well, that's all right. That's all right. You sure?
Yeah, because it really, I would, you know, how this compares to other schools, but that's, you know, that's comparing apples and oranges, and it's not worth getting into that.
Okay. All right. Mr. Peace, additional questions or clarifying questions?
Yes. My question, in looking at the chart there was...
Can you pull your mic closer, sir?
Yeah, thank you. The school has met growth for the last five years, and my question is, did it ever exceed growth before this time?
All right, so you're asking what the growth pattern was before this time?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm interested in knowing if it actually exceeded growth.
Okay.
Before it met growth for the last five years.
Gotcha. All right. Other questions?
Yeah, the other, the other question, concern I have has to do with when closing the school, how do we look at a need to be doing things that's the least disturbance as relates to the students? Because as we move towards closing a school, any school, we need to look at the effect it's going to have. going to have on the students and the number of students it's going to affect.
Okay. How would you put that into a question? Or does, does that make a, is that a question for you, for the staff? Do you understand that?
Well, I think that would vary depending on what school was decided on and where you would send those kids that it's going to affect. But I think all that needs to be thought about and considered during the process, just like a short-term and long-term effect for students.
Okay. All right. Short-term, long-term effects on the students based on closing of a school. All right. Any other questions, Mr. Peace?
That's it.
Thank you. Ms. LeBret, questions, clarifying questions?
Yeah, so my first question actually is, I think, expanding a little bit on what Dr. Houlihan was asking about the cost savings. So, I guess my question is, would that money, that 850 whatever thousand, would that alone take care of the monetary needs that, for example, we're asking of the county commissioners this year? And how much extra above that would we be able to put into our fund balance?
Right. So, that's a great question, if I can answer. So, we are, actually, we are, the 21-22 budget proposal included using fund balance of $635,000, but then also, we're using federal one-time funds for temporary positions of $900,000. So, we're at like 1.5 million of a financial issue, and so this would not completely solve that, that issue.
Okay. So, is there a way then that, like, for, because I think that kind of applies to each of these studies, is there a way that we could include that then in, in a revision that would say, like, this is how much extra we would need?
Yes.
Or, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Include that.
Ms. Day, with that, can you make sure you include, I think some of those one-time positions might be absorbed if we closed the school? If I remember correctly, like, some of the classified positions? Can we make sure we clarify with that as well?
Yes, certainly, certainly, because that's definitely a factor, is that one-time, what we're spending one-time federal funds for, as well as how much we're using a fund balance. So, it's the combination of those two things.
Okay. Other questions, Ms. LeBret?
My other question actually would be for facilities, and if Creedmore were to close, I guess, because we have the arts program there, so then you've got dance and, you know, music and all of those programs, what would another facility need in order to be able to accommodate that?
Okay. Additional facilities needed to move the arts program?
Exactly.
Okay. Other questions?
Nope.
All right. What I want to do is give you the opportunity, if you have thought of something as we've gone around the table, before we do a final run-through of these questions, anybody else come up with another question or additional information?
I just, if I could, Ms. Chair, the decline in enrollment is something that seems to be pretty steady, and Mike, I'd like to know what's going on and why, because if we do not deal with this school, which we very well may not, what's going to happen over the next five years? And I'd also like to know why the school is not able to attract more students to the academic arts programs. If, you know, if, if there's an issue of funding or an issue, whatever it might be, it would be good to know, you know, why these things are happening.
So, factors of decline in enrollment and the factors of why maybe the choice program is not larger?
That's good, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any, yes, ma'am, Ms. Williams?
This is a question for this study, and it probably goes for all of them. I'd just like, because of unintended consequences that could happen, how much are these numbers projecting savings based on enrollment staying the same or further declining due to charter enrollments? And if so, or if not, based on that, I'd like, kind of like to know, for every 50 kids, every 100 kids we lose to charter, how does that affect our savings?
Any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to go through these questions here, and we'll decide as a board if this is all information we want added into the study. So, we have talked about what the optimal capacity of Creedmore is. Has the choice program number been stable? Would other schools be able to accommodate self-contained classes? And would there be an increased cost with that? When you relocate students from Creedmore to other zones, would all students go to one school, and how is that decided? And we talked about what the executive team's thoughts are on that public input we received, or the clarifying answer to that was that public input would be needed. As for further information with students regarding that go to the Butner schools, how many personnel are locally funded and how much of the savings are state-related funds? Do we know what cost local funds would be from year to year? We talked about the 21 teachers that were given to Creedmore Elementary, what additional funds are used to pay for the arts program, and how are those teachers determined for the 21? We asked to clarify in question of the property value that Dr. Winborn indicated that at this time, we only have the tax card. We asked, did the school excel or exceed growth prior to the five years ago? How do we look at the effects that's going to take for the short and long-term effects on students based on our decisions? Would cost savings take care of the needs that we are asking the commissioners for, and how much would go back into fund balance? And then there would be a way to indicate that into the studies? If Creedmore were to close, what would another facility need to move the arts program? Why is there a decline in enrollment and what will happen over the next five years? What can the school, why can the school not attract more students for the arts program? Are the numbers projecting savings based on enrollment staying the same or declining? And how does that affect our savings? Does that seem to capture? Did we miss anything? Yes, sir?
I have one last question, I guess, and it, it could apply to any school that we closed, and it's, what do we do with the school or the campus it's on once we close the school?
So, how would we dispose of the campus after we closed it? Or what could it be used for?
What can it be? I wouldn't say dispose, because we might not want to do that, but we need to talk about what are we going to do with it at any rate?
Okay.
Not only that school, but any school.
Any of our schools? Yes, sir. Okay.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know for that school and all the other schools, for each one of them, how much room is there physically for any additions should down the road we find ourselves in a totally different situation of growth as opposed to declining enrollment?
So, I have how much room physically exists if there is a need to add additional space? All right. Board members, these are what you are proposing to be added to the studies. What would be the pleasure of the board? Would you make a motion to approve all of these to add to the Creedmore study?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Dr. McKnight, a second by Ms. Williams to add for the requested information to be added to this study. Is there any further discussion?
Dr. Houlihan.
Oh, Dr. Houlihan, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Too many doctors in the room. All right. If you're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right. Thank you so much. Board, next we will move to the Wilton study. Staff?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will now review the study of the proposed closing of Wilton Elementary School. Again, this was presented at the October 5, 2020 Board of Education meeting, revised and then presented again at October 26, and then reintroduced this evening, the same table of contents as Creedmore. I'll just begin briefly with the history of Wilton. Of course, you know, this, this community has roots going back to the turn of the century, 1900. I did find some sad news about a tornado that blew through the community and was devastating to the people there, but the Wilton High School was constructed at that current site in 1924, and then over the next couple of decades, some additions were added. When South Granville was built in 1962, the older students, the secondary students shifted, and the younger students stayed there. And then, in 1985, they began construction at the main part of the current facility to house students grades K7, and I believe Dr. Houlihan was, was serving as superintendent around that time. Those 345 students began classes in 1987, and then in 1991, they added additional classrooms, and then in 1997, added more yet again. And then, in 2005, they did some modifications to the cafeteria and some other renovations. So, you can see that photograph about circa 2012 there of the school, and again, a more recent one on page four showing each of the expansions. Enrollment summary on page five shows that back in 2010, Wilton was literally busting at the seams. There were over 600 students at that school and quite a few mobile units on that campus, and that was one of the reasons why that Tar River was built. Enrollment pressure was, was really high among our elementary schools. And right after Tar River was built, you can see that drop because of the shift in the attendance zones. And then in 1415, Wilton was designated a choice school. So, since that time, you can see on page six, you know, right after the redistricting with Tar River, enrollment has remained more or less steady with a slight decline in enrollment over the past couple of years. The choice program has had a huge impact on the school. At least 100 of the current 260 students are there by choice. So, those are students that do not reside in the school's attendance zone. However, it is worth noting that there are a number of students that live in the Wilton attendance zone that don't attend Wilton, because there are only 160 children that live in Wilton's zone that attend that school. So, there are a lot that also go to other schools and/or charters. So, page seven shows that breakdown of those that go to Wilton for the leader-in-the-program and the schools from which they come.
Tar River and Creedmore. That's interesting.
All right. The next section is the legal factors, which we have already covered, and then, so that brings us to the factors to consider in the study, and we will start with Ms. Day.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn. So, as required by law, this study must include the cost of providing additional school facilities in the event of such closing or consolidation. In addition, the study includes a financial analysis, any, any potential savings. So, if you refer to page 11 of the printed copy, which is page 12 of the PDF, so the financial impact, there are no anticipated costs of closing Wilton, as the students from Wilton could be absorbed into the existing elementary school facilities, and Dr. Winborn will go through this later in the presentation. There are potential cost savings associated with the consolidation of schools. So, if you'll turn to Appendix 1 for the more detailed, it's on page 33 of the printed copy or 34 in the PDF, it's a two-page legal-sized document. The appendix includes, as, as consistent with all the, the other studies, the appendix includes a representative, representation of the total cost of the school, ongoing cost and anticipated savings. And the schedule's broken into the two sections, the top section being personnel, the current personnel, and the, the bottom section being the 1920 school operating cost, so that we would get a look at the full year. So, I'll start with the personnel section at the top of the document. A description of each position is listed with a column for the amount provided by the state based on ADM or the school. The third column is the additional cost in state or local funds that are used to support those positions, that are above and beyond what is funded by ADM for this, for that school. The next column is the total current cost, which is the previous two columns added together. And the next few columns are based on discussions with HR, as well as a review of the state formulas tied to the student numbers. So, this is an analysis of the ongoing positions and associated dollars after consolidation. And then the final columns are the position reductions and net potential consolidation savings. These financial savings estimates include a reduction of 13 positions with a net potential savings and operating budget of $603,256 and child nutrition of $45,687, and this is for the personnel side. Of course, this is the financial side, and Mr. Perry will talk in more detail when he talks about the, the human resource implications. The lower section of the appendix includes operating costs for the school in 1920. The instructional operating cost would follow the students and be ongoing. The facility costs have been reflected as a savings, and this is assuming that the Board of Education would not maintain ownership of the building. That would need to be adjusted if ownership wasn't maintained. The total potential consolidation savings for operating cost is $85,756. So, then in the bottom right corner of Appendix A, page 22, you'll see the total potential savings of $734,699, which is, includes $45,687 for child nutrition and...
Ms. Day, would you go a little bit slower?
Sorry. And $689,012 for the operating budget. And I will just remind the board that those are recurring annual savings. This is, this is ongoing savings. So, that's the detailed side of those numbers. If you turn back to page 12, it's page 13 of the PDF, the total current annual cost for the school are $2,464,252, that's personnel and operating costs. The anticipated ongoing cost after consolidation, $1,612,214. Again, the, the unique school-based funding formula is for the school principal position. So, we do receive state funding for the, for the principal's salary and benefits based on having the school. So, the elimination of the school would eliminate that state funding. So, that, that's a reduction of $117,339. So, it's a net potential annual savings, recurring savings of $734,699, which again includes $45,687 for child nutrition. Just, again, would remind the board that the 21-22 budget proposal submitted to the county reflected using fund balance of $635,000 to balance the budget, and it also reflected positions paid from limited federal funds of $912,000, time-limited funds. So, any savings from these studies could first be used to solve those existing financial issues. And then, just to answer the question as far as what we're asking the county for, that does not include that, I mean, you know, that is money that we need above and beyond... does not include that, I mean, you know, that is money that we need above and beyond what these savings would be. So that, that's not a part of, of, of looking at, at these savings. We, we have needs that we've balanced our budget with currently for, in excess of what these savings would be. So I'll now turn it over to Mr. Perry for HR.
We'll review the information for Wilton Elementary School, which is pretty similar for Creedmore Elementary School as far as how the building is staffed. Again, that is determined by the average daily membership of the number of students that are in that building. So NCDPI allot those, those teaching positions based on the ADM for day 20 of the academic school year. So we scroll down to page 13, you'll notice the allotment, student allotment based on the number of, and the teacher and student allotment and the HB90 average class size limits. Wilton Elementary currently has 15 classroom teachers for six grade levels, for grades K through 5, one PE teacher and one reading teacher, for a total of 17 teachers. And the chart here labels our kindergarten teacher through grade 5 and the number of teachers per grade span. Listed in blue, or shown in blue, you'll see the current class size information that was provided from Power School with the number of teachers and the average class size. Just as I mentioned earlier, with the Exceptional Children's Program, that is funded through a separate budget source. So staffing outside of the state allotment for ADM, program enhancements, ESL, are paid using local dollars. As far as, as Ms. Day mentioned, there is one principal assigned to Wilton Elementary School, there's one assistant principal. So Wilton, this allotment is given to the district as a whole and the school district supplements, AP, based on the number of students in the building. The counselor, there's one counselor. The school district supplements, the counselor staffing, because their ratio is based on one instructional support position for every 211 students. So Wilton currently has one school counselor. Other certified support staff include a reading teacher, which is covered through federal funds, Title I. Our school-based classified staff includes our teacher assistants, office support. So Wilton has one receptionist, bookkeeper combined role. The closure of Wilton would allow for this position to be included in the cost savings for personnel, as allowed through attrition across the district. Wilton has one data manager, receptionist, and two custodians. This position would also be included in the cost savings for personnel. Five instructional assistants, four of which are assigned to classrooms, and one who's assigned to the media center. Moving forward, Dr. Meyer will address curriculum and instruction.
Thank you. The top portion just talks a little bit about some research with small schools and the advantages and perhaps disadvantages. And Mr. Perry had mentioned in the blue, the number of staff and so forth. Just continue to the next. The table below shows the number of students who are receiving specialized services in academically gifted students, and if you will scroll down, I think there should be one, and Exceptional Children's Program. I do want to note that Wilton does not have a self-contained classroom. As you can see here, I did not indicate that on this chart. Next slide. And of course, all of our elementary schools use the same resources and have available to them. The school has either met or exceeded growth since the 2013, 2014 school year, with the most recent years, 2016, 17, exceeding growth through 2018, 19, when the last time we tested. Next. So a description of the choice program. Wilton is a leader in me school. The school is among the first elementary school choice schools in the district. According to the Leader in Me website, Leader in Me is an evidence-based comprehensive school improvement model developed in partnership with educators that empower students with the leadership and skill, life skills they need to thrive in the 21st century. The framework provides a unique approach to integrating highly effective teaching practices through a school's culture. Instead of focusing on academic measures alone, Leader in Me embodies a holistic approach to education, redefining how schools measure success. And just a little bit more about that, I'm going to skip down to the next paragraph and just talk about how the teachers receive Leader in Me coaching from the organization. The coaching helps teachers incorporate the seven leadership principles into their daily lessons, and the program continues to grow in popularity amongst families, as evidenced by the number of students who have chosen Wilton as their school of choice. Continue. And so merging, implementing the choice program at another school. The Leader in Me program can be merged or implemented at another school. If the program is merged or implemented at another school, it is recommended that coaching support be provided by Leader in Me to assist emerging cultures, staff, students, and systems. The $8,500 membership cost is a recurring expense that includes one day of coaching and access to the Leader in Me materials. Each additional coaching day costs $3,500. The amount of additional coaching support and initial training at a new school would depend on the number of staff in the building who have been trained by the Leader in Me. Next, I will turn it back over to Dr. Winborn.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. So regarding infrastructure and operations, Wilton Elementary School is actually the smallest of our school facilities in the district, about 48,000 square feet of indoor space on 18 acres. Currently, there are four vacant classrooms at the school, as well as other classrooms on the campus that are used for non-classroom educational activities. If the school were closed, the students could be reassigned to the two closest existing elementary schools. The distance between Wilton to Tar River is .8 miles, and the distance between Wilton and Mount Energy is 4.1 miles. You're looking at that chart right there. Tar River and Mount Energy have just over 500 students, capacity, available capacity between them. So it could accommodate the move of those students, either combined or perhaps one or the other. So again, there is analysis on page 22 from ORED, which just shows some of those projections out, and that Wilton, according to this study, does anticipate adding students in that community, too, during the next 10 years. So, and again, questions about the validity of that information based on some of the other data we've received. As far as capital outlay, Wilton currently has more than $2.7 million of, of critical need over the next five years. The HVAC is about 3/4 of a million dollars. We've done some upgrades to the control systems, but the, the central system itself needs to be replaced, and the roof needs to be replaced as well for about 1.3 million. Both of those are really close to the, the end of life and, and need to be, need to be fixed. The most recent air quality testing was, was good, but it did show elevation, elevated levels of humidity in the building. And as we know, humidity is sort of the enemy when it comes to mold. That's how mold starts and gets a hold. Fortunately, there was just one kind of aberrant reading in the last round, but again, it continues to be a concern, just because of the, the age of the HVAC system. The tax card is here as a reference point. Again, no official property appraisal has been done by a third party. Regarding transportation, again, we're looking back at the 1920 school year because of this year's irregular nature of school bus use. Wilton had three school buses, served about 100 students, and those three buses traveled 160-odd miles a day, and were on the road for almost eight hours a day, every day, morning and evening, total. So if Wilton were closed and the students went to the neighboring elementary schools, both and/or either, we believe that you could remove one bus from the fleet based on our analysis, and that would result in a savings of about $25,000 per year based on the removal of one bus. That's the salary and the fuel and maintenance costs. If you look on page 25, you've got some attendance zone maps. Again, these are the same ones from the Creedmore study. And Wilton is the orange area, represented near the bottom of this. On page 26, it shows a close-up. The approximate location you can see there with the arrow, WES, Wilton Elementary School, pointing, pointing that out. Again, it would be the board providing direction to the experts at NC State, sort of what your pleasure would be about how to redraw these attendance zones, and as Board Member Anderson pointed out, you know, it would be a very good idea to get public input in that process as well. Page 27 shows the free and reduced lunch information. Again, this chart are counts. We do believe that we could save some money by consolidating. We could eliminate two out of the four positions. The other two would sort of follow the children, but that, that would be a savings of about $45,000. The free and reduced lunch data, by the way, is about 47% for 2020, 47%. Again, those are counts in that chart. School culture and the impact on the community, obviously, you know, at that school, a lot of school pride, a lot of interest in the school and that community, strong PTO. The Leader in Me is very, very successful. They've won state awards, national awards for that. So, but again, this is sort of a subjective qualitative question, so that, I'll leave that up to board members to consider. In summary, you can see listed there, this closure could provide a potential annual recurring cost savings to the school district. It could, of course, increase the efficiency of our staffing and result in potential increases in academic opportunities for students, and it would really incur minimal or no cost to close the school. And it could provide additional funds for capital outlay if it were sold. I know that's something that was discussed previously, so this was added in here. And there, you know, the impact on the culture, of course, it's just a variety of, of ways that could impact things. So that concludes our study of Wilton Elementary School.
Thank you, staff. Again, we'll do this in the same fashion that we did previously. We'll go around the table. If you have clarifying questions or information you'd like to add to the study, now will be the opportunity to do that. Ms. Shave will keep a notes for us, and we'll begin with Ms. LeBretton this time.
Aw, do you have to?
Well, we don't have to if Dr. McKnight's ready. Okay. All right, Dr. McKnight, will you go? That's going to cost you probably, so just remember that.
I just need another moment to gather my thoughts.
I know that there are only 160 students in the, in the Wilton attendance zone that actually attend Wilton. Is there any way we can find out how many students assigned to that attendance zone actually attend charter schools? I know charters usually send some type of bill with, or whatever. Is there a way we can track that down?
I'm scared to repeat that because I saw the look Ms. Day just had. So the question is, is can we track down charter school students and assign them back to their attendance zones to find that out, how many kids in the, now, are you wanting that just for Wilton or for all of them?
You know, it's not too much trouble, the Creedmore and Wilton.
Okay. Is that good, Ms. Day?
Yes, yes. I think the transportation department, we need to be involved in that. We, we do get addresses for all of the students that attend charter school.
Okay.
So that could, I'm, I'm looking at Dr. Winborn to say whether that can be done or not.
It can be done.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Other questions, Dr. McKnight?
I do, I do have another one. I, I have some that were given to me by some stakeholders. On page 28 in the study for Wilton, there's a section here that says, close to the bottom here. Something that requires significant additional resources to provide similar services found in other elementary schools in the district. Do we know what type of services we're talking about, or do you have any examples of what type of services?
Okay, so that's a clarification on that sentence. Staff, are y'all prepared to answer that now, or do we need to clarify that within the study?
Probably if you'll just give us some time.
Okay, all right. Dr. McKnight?
That's it, those are two, two big ones.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Williams?
Okay. I'm on page 5. Looking at the enrollment, it looks like Wilton has stayed pretty stable, but toward the last couple of years, seems to have had a little bit of drop there. It looks like that 20 of the kids are from the northern part of the county that come to Wilton. And what I'm wondering is if we could find out how many kids we lost to Oxford Prep that came out of Wilton, that came to Wilton from the Oxford and northern part of the county.
Say that one more time, that, how many people are coming?
How many existing students that we lost over the last couple of years, once the elementary school was instituted at Oxford Prep?
Okay.
I'd just like to kind of know how much that affected the Wilton enrollment, based on the fact that we do have 20 coming from the northern end of the county. And it's about, like, 38.5% of the kids come from other school districts other than Wilton, so that's interesting statistic.
All right, other questions? Okay, I'm sorry. I missed that headline, I'm sorry.
I'm sure I have some somewhere to pop up later.
All right, Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I, again, I get back with, with regards to the, you know, school culture and the impact on the community. As far as I see Wilton, and it probably goes with what Ms. Williams was saying with regards to the people coming in, students coming in from other areas or other portions of the county, because of the numerous awards for the choice program and Leader in Me. But I believe you also stated, Dr. Winborn, that, you know, if, depending on what goes with this, with the, you know, decision on the school or whatever, those programs can be picked up by whatever other, where the student goes. They will be picked up, these types of things like the Leader in Me and the Choice and all of those type things. They will be picked up by the other schools. I'm just looking at the people that's going there to Wilton, decided to go there from other schools because of these great programs, and they've been doing some great things. You know, they will anticipate that they will also be able to get those same great things somewhere else, you know what I'm saying? So would you envision, or there is no kind of records that would basically give a flow of, you know, what students, they would migrate to other schools? And then sometime we hear that, no, I think students will probably just decide, they don't want to leave their area to go to another location. And, you know, have there been any kind of impact with the closure of the other two schools as to how the parents did decide to migrate their kids, either to charter schools, or they did with the choice program or whatever? This is a great program, and I guess I'm a little with them migrating, the 20 that's migrating to go to this great program, as to other possible schools closer in, that they don't have to migrate from north and just to get to Wilton for these programs. Any kind of, you know, study or anything that shows the migration and as to why, or will that be an impact if, you know, we ended up ending this program at Wilton?
Go ahead. So maybe if, the question is, do, have we done an analysis of the movement of students?
A movement based on programs?
Right, no ma'am, not an in-depth student-by-student count. It's mostly anecdotal, and we can see trends.
Yes, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Any other questions, Ms. Sam?
No, no.
Okay. Dr. Holahan?
Yeah, I'm going to just go back for a minute. I am bothered by, Ms. Day, the data on potential consolidation savings, because I think that there are a range of numbers that we could put down based on the fact that, you know, an assistant principal, that's one person, you know, how many of them are locally paid? Is that person locally paid? And if so, that's $90,000. If not, then it's just not... The point I'm trying to make is, you're doing, I mean, I'm not questioning you. The point I'm trying to make is, I don't feel for Creedmore or for any of these schools that $603,000 is an accurate number because of local funding versus district funding, I mean, a state funding, and you're assuming or you're saying that that's a locally funded position, therefore we're going to save $90,000. My point is, it's just, to me, Creedmore, it just, it's just not the, necessarily the accurate number. And it's, it just bothers me. And I'm not, I'm just saying that this local versus state, and you say, well, this is the way it works. That's fine, but at the end of the day, the school system makes the decision about where local positions go. You know, we had savings of a position, and when we talked about Toler Oak Hill, I think, and yet that position wasn't eliminated, it just went to another school. So is that a savings? I don't know. It's just not, to me, information that is, I'm not going to say inaccurate, but it's information that there's a degree of skepticism about with, is that really savings or not? So I just want to say that. A couple of other things. Somebody said the word, and I'm...
Hold on before you move on to your next. Is, do you need clarifying information? Do we need to correct something in the way it's being said? Because I want to clear up with that one issue before we move on to another.
I would just say that, a couple of things. One thing is, we're very conservative about using the savings, you know, looking at the savings. So if there's a question, we don't include that as a savings. If we think that that would be a continuing cost, that's not included. And, you know, we can break it out between, you know, local dollars and state dollars, but I don't think that gives the information that, because ultimately, these savings do reflect back onto fund balance. In the situation with the closures of the previous schools, the savings that were realized by the board did come out of, we, the board no longer had to use fund balance appropriated. That number came down by the amount of the savings because the state and the local dollars work so closely together. So I...
Can I ask an example that might kind of clear it up? Last year, we were two assistant principals heavy. Am I close to that? That we were having to fund that out of fund balance? And so is that how you realize savings off of an assistant principal because we're no longer funding that out of that fund balance?
Correct. That's correct.
Does that make better sense for you?
Yes, but let me, so we had two, did we have the same number of local assistant principals when we closed Toler?
So the savings, I mean, the savings that we, that were reported for Toler came out, we no longer used fund balance appropriated for that. So, I mean, I can definitively say that.
I'm not, go, we no longer used fund balance to pay for that?
Right.
And you're making, so if that position was not eliminated, but we didn't use fund balance?
So the person might not have been eliminated, but the position would have been eliminated, and so therefore it was savings out of the fund balance? And I don't know specifically. I shouldn't really speak to that because I don't, the specific situation that you're talking about. But I do know that the dollars that were reported as savings, recurring savings from those school closures have, the fund balance is no longer being spent to balance the budget because of those, the savings that were realized from those closures.
I still, well, I mean, the bottom line for me is, if that, I just, I just don't feel that it's accurate. I'm not saying it's inaccurate intentionally, but if we say it's savings right now, it may or may not be savings with, if we continue with those positions.
So, so, finance and HR went through together, like each, each type of position to say, what would be the ongoing positions? You know, how many ongoing, so you're right, there might be, I mean, we did that based on what we know right now.
Right.
And how many positions, based on the number of students, and those students going to another school, how many continuing positions we would have. So, I mean, we definitely don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know, but I can say, I feel comfortable with this in the fact that the previous decisions that the board have made did result in a financial savings of those, the estimates. And it's the same methodology here.
Well, I, okay, you know, you're a terrific person, and I'm not going to get into, I just want to make that point, that there's, anyway, let me hurry along because I, you know, somebody used the term non-traditional academic activities or something? I may not have written it down correctly.
I believe when Dr. Winborn was talking about classroom space, is that correct?
It may have been.
And, and I think what he was referring to was when maybe a classroom is used as a pull-out classroom, but not a 20-student classroom. Is that what you were remembering?
Dr. Winborn?
Well, Ms. Richardson's right. We, we, there are, many of our schools right now that have, that are under capacity, and they use their rooms, which are designed as classrooms, for things like a conference room, a data room, you know, an office for a teacher. Or they might see two students at a time, but instead of using a small room for it, they're using an entire classroom. That's what that was referencing.
And, okay. All right, fine. I wanted to say something about the Leader in Me program. Is there any reason that other schools down there have not started this program? Do we have any idea if it is or isn't? Or that would be an interesting thing to know, just the same as the arts? Because I will very much disagree with the fact that this program would continue at the level that it is if there is not strong customer, principal support. And if they haven't picked it up at this point, why not? And I just, just want to say that we cannot assume that a good program, because a good program is good, that the next school will do it and pick it up, when we know that without leadership, nothing's going to be successful. I just felt like I needed to, just to say that. So, that's all.
So was that last one data that you wanted them to look for? Was, had another school?
Yeah. If, if, if the school was interested, if, why the schools Tar River and Mount Energy, why they have not decided to go with?
That program.
That program. And how would that impact success of that program if it went from Wilton to one of the other schools?
Okay. Mr. Peace?
Yes, sir. Thank you. My concern has to do with the Leader in Me program also. And one of the concerns that I had was, why is it just that one school as good as it's supposed to be? You know? It seems to me, and I know there's a cost to it, and that might be the problem that we might have, but it seems like there's enough people that has worked in it to make it successful, because Wilson, those students, teachers that has been in it, has to go someplace else.
Yes, sir.
So, I don't see why it couldn't be as successful at two or three schools as opposed to just one.
So your question, similar piggybacks on Dr. Holahan's?
Right.
Okay.
It has to do with, it appears to be an excellent program at Wilton, so why can't it be an excellent program someplace else, or at two or three someplace else's? And, you know, the other thing that sort of was stuck in my mind, as long as it's been going on at Wilton, and the number of teachers has made it a success, why do we have to continue to pay, pay for it to be success someplace else? I mean, I know there are some, might be some legalities that has to do with that, but it's the question that I think is worth exploring, if you can make the same thing, same program successful at West Oxford or any other school.
So, Dr. Winborn, I think, kind of clarify maybe that question. If we were to pick up that entire program with those teachers, would, would we need to pay a retraining cost? Does it, I guess, follow to the school that that cost would be?
I would think it would have to be a modified version that would be different in some aspects.
I think some of that cost is associated with licensing as well.
Got you. Okay. All right. Anything else?
That's all.
All right. Ms. LeBret?
Yes. Okay. So, my first question was kind of similar to Dr. McKnight's in that the attendant, how many students in each attendance zone choose to go elsewhere? And so, really curious as far as the students in Wilton and also in Creedmore, where, where do they go within our district even? So if, how many, and how many of them choose to go elsewhere within our district, not just to charter schools?
Okay.
And then, okay, so, my brain kind of went off on a tangent, and I apologize in advance, but I'm curious to know the possibility of making Wilton into a K-8 leadership program? And what other school could potentially house that? So I know we're talking about potentially moving Wilton somewhere else. And so my question is, would it be possible to take Wilton, move it to Mount Energy, and the students from G C Holly, and make that a K-8 leadership in-me program? And then disperse the Mount Energy students to, between Creedmore Elementary, Tar River, and Buttonhurst Elementary? And then the remaining G C Holly Middle School students can choose, if they would like to, to go to Buttonhurst Middle?
Okay. Let me clarify with the attorney.
That would require another study to close Mount Energy, is that correct?
I'm thinking. I mean, it depends on, it's somewhat semantics. I think that you could close Wilton, let's say, removing those students and the program to Mount Energy. You're not closing Mount Energy, you're closing Wilton.
Okay. What about if they want to take the name? Is that where you get into semantics?
I mean, you honestly, if you're trying to combine multiple schools to a new school, you often want a new name to, you know, inculcate some sort of, yeah. So you might have a new name entirely.
I mean, instead of calling it Wilton, you just call it, you know, Leadership Academy.
I mean, obviously, you would still need...
Granville Leadership Academy, you know? I don't know.
Whether or not you need, like, the formal study under the statute, obviously, you would need to study this option and then get some information about it before saying it could work. I know that one thing that has come up is, only some of your elementary schools have the facilities that a middle school needs, like a gym and athletic fields. And I don't know. So, obviously, it is something that would need study.
So it sounds like, if I'm correct, and kind of what we agreed upon was that that would have to come at the end of this study cycle, I guess?
Okay.
Possibly, unless the board decided to take action. The timeline we have on the table now is based off of the three studies we currently have.
Right.
If the board's pleasure was to take on this whole new issue, then we would need to revise that timeline.
Okay.
I'm not sure I understand, Mr.
So because it's outside of the scope of what we're, there's more parts to it of what we're studying, the board would have to decide to alter the timeline because there would be, obviously, we're already halfway through the timeline. Because she's proposing a whole new idea.
It would basically leave the high schools alone.
Yeah.
For now.
Does that make sense? Sir, am I?
I, no. To me, I'm sorry. I thought that we were going to review these studies and determine after the conversation that if we wanted or needed another study to be done based on the conversations.
But you're not having the conversations until the end of June, as far as what motions actually come to the floor.
Right, right. So...
So I guess his question is, we couldn't request another, like, an extra closure study on top of?
I mean, I guess in theory you could, yeah.
But if her, if her idea was to take the kids from Wilton to Mount Energy where there's a lot of room, you could, you wouldn't, I mean, you could still have a Wilton and a Mount Energy in the same building.
Not if you're adding Holly Middle School to it as well.
Okay, I got you. Okay, okay. So, I don't, I don't know.
I know, I'm sorry. I just like, which is kind of what I wanted, extra time.
Yeah. I would assume, and by no means am I the one to make the decision, is in order to move some of those pieces, that would need to come to the board on the 29th of June. I would assume, but, I mean, again, you could potentially, somebody help me out here.
Let me, let me just say this. I'm just like you. I've been looking at other pieces of the puzzle.
Right.
To see how we can pull this all together.
Right.
And I could make some recommendations just like you, because I've been looking at these puzzle pieces for quite a while.
Right.
But if there is a process that we're going through, which, right now, we're looking at one school, one school, asking question, asking questions, and getting that, you know, pulling this together, I'm really at the point of thinking, okay, let's take one step at a time so that I can understand this process. Because really, I did do some study on this over the weekend, and I do have some recommendations too. They probably, you know, you will have one, I'll have one, someone else will have one. So my question is, Mr. Richardson, if, you know, if we're here tonight to, you know, look at this, answer questions, get this, or something else that needs to come from Dr. Winborn and the rest of the staff, that they're going to bring back to us, so then it'll help me to, you know, pose my recommendation, just like you, Ms. LeBret, because, yes, I have some things too, but I wasn't sure if this is the time to put it on table until we get this, you know what I'm saying? I want to just make sure I'm doing this in a process fashion. That's...
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, ma'am.
May I take a crack at it?
Absolutely.
So, as I understand, I mean, so you have done, or you have started a study on the closure of Wilton Elementary, which doesn't, which gives some options for where those students would go. So it would be possible, the board could, and, you know, through a motion and a vote, to ask the staff to add to the study of Wilton a consideration of moving them with their program to Mount Energy and what that would take? That it, you know, it's a lot, so the staff would have to say, I mean, if you're also saying a K through eight school. Um, I, I do think you could add that to this study if you wanted to.
Okay.
You know, now implicit in that plan somewhere is closure of Holly, which we haven't technically studied, but, um, I mean, closure or consolidation, you know, the consolidation of schools. So, um, you know, that would need to be. I- i- it's hard on the spot to think through all the things, but I, I do think it's, it is possible to add that to the study of Wilton if the board felt like they couldn't make a decision until they knew where the students were going and what, you know.
I guess my question is like, cause I, I, if we're, if we're going down this path and we're going down this path and we get to the very end and we go, and we have, we haven't talked about other scenarios, I guess, I guess I'm kind of confused. Like if there are, if other, if there are other scenarios that we still want to hash out, do we need to pause this and talk about that? Instead of continuing down this road, spinning wheels for two months and then going, well, that's not working, let's switch gears. You know what I mean?
I would think one thing we need to think about, that if we are going to go down this path in any way, a- at this point, and, and I'm kind of speaking for the superintendent, jump in here if you need to, we're going to have to hire somebody to do these at that point because we still have five people that have their day jobs to do and, a- and I'm not singling you out, I'm just saying, now we're asking for something a whole lot bigger than we originally anticipated, which may be the direction we're heading. We just need to know that that's going to need to come with a cost to do that. Um, and maybe we spend money upfront to get to where we're going. But it's not as simple, I think, at this point of adding options because w- we're at the end of the school year, which runs into the summer, which runs into next school year. So, that's something we need to think about as a board, that if we're going to, to make a motion to amend these studies in that way, um, that we also need to think about that process.
Mr. S- I understand exactly what you're saying, but to me, this is the most important and the most difficult thing that we will ever do. It will have tremendous, tremendous consequences and unintended consequences. And to me, I mean, that idea I had never thought about. You know, maybe we can't do K eight, maybe we can do K five or whatever, but, you know, that's a win-win. And, and so I just, I understand what you're saying a hundred percent, but I think we just have to explore and come up hopefully with consensus. And, um, I just think we, I think we need to look at anything that we need to look at that people are interested in as a board and make sure that when we're through and we make our final decisions, we all feel like we have done everything we could, we've analyzed everything, we looked at every opportunity, and yes, it's messy. Toler Oak Hill was messy. I just say that, you know, in, in, in the, with the greatest level of, of respect, this is something that is so important and we have to get it right.
I agree with you, I, I think, yes, sir.
When we talk about doing studies of schools, you know, we haven't talked about what we're going to do with Tar River or if we can do anything with it. You know, in my mind, at some point, I, I'm going to want to talk about that. Uh, and I know where we are now, what somebody is going to say, well, we haven't studied it, whatever it is. And I'm going to say, you know, we still need to have, we need to consider what it, how it plays into the whole scheme of things as it relates to elementary schools in the southern part of county. Now, uh, I don't know if anybody else on this board think we need to consider Tar River. But, uh, in my mind, I'm going to advocate for studying what I think we need to know, the information we need to have as a board in order to make an informed decision at the end. Now, and, you know, we, we, we really haven't studied Holly either. Or no official study, I mean, if we're going to close the school. And it seems like that's the way, where we're headed. And, and, uh, do we need to study? I mean, if this, the board, this board feel like that Holly has to be closed and something else has to happen, do we need to study? That's, that might be a question for the young lady that's sitting behind you, but I don't. I'm not going to put all this on you, uh, Mr. Chairman.
You get paid more, man, go ahead.
So, I'm not sure I understand the question to be honest, is the?
The, the, let me sort of clear, clear it up. The, the idea that I think we and all the other board members have is that Holly's going to have to close at some point in the not-too-distant future.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need a study on it for that to happen?
You, yes, unless you're just moving it. So, some of the scenarios we've talked about is closing an elementary school and then moving the Holly students to that building.
Okay.
So, in that case.
You don't have to.
You're just moving Holly, you're not closing it.
Okay.
You're closing the elementary school and that, you know.
Okay, so if that move is to Tar River.
Mm-hmm.
Then we need a study of Tar River. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not sure I'm following that. So, if you're saying that you're going to move Holly to Tar River, that mean that a decision has had, has been made then to close Tar River?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what you have to study is when you're closing.
And that's what you have, but we have not, but no one has.
But that's what he's asking is if he, he wants to throw out that scenario. So, is that the next thing we study?
And I, I, I'll be real honest, what, um, I, I think, I agree with you, very hard decision. Um, I think there are a lot of different scenarios we need to look at, but we're also on the situation of we can't keep going back to the public, to the faculty and the s- s- uh, teachers, to the commissioners and, and keep telling them that we're kicking it down the road. I mean, because.
But we're not kicking it down the road because this, I mean, we've assumed that because X, Y, and Z in one scenario is what we're going to look at. When Mr. Peace raised the question, if there are meeting about, about Tar River and, and, um, selling a building and use, using that money to fix it up, this is not something that is separate from, or should be separate from the discussions that we had.
Well, I guess my question would be is why didn't we ask them to study it then?
That's a good question.
Exactly.
When, when we, when we had our scenarios due at the last board meeting, that would have better prepared the staff, I feel like.
Well, I mean.
Well, I, I, I'll accept the blame or whatever.
Yeah.
For, for not saying we need to do that, but that doesn't alleviate the fact.
Yeah.
That it needs to be, that, that what needs to happen to have that, uh, scenario or that based on what it needs for us to make a legal decision about stuff.
So, I guess the, my, my question would revolve around that process. What, what is the pleasure of the board at this point? Do we pause where we're at with this and ask them to add whatever studies onto it? And again, if we do that, I think we're going to have to ask for some outside help to do that.
Let me just say that if we get back into doing what Mr. Peace is saying, I have three or four others to put on the table that needs a study too.
Yeah.
Really. Because I was going to propose, and, and you know, all of this paperwork that we've been going through, I was going to propose that, and you mentioned Holly, you know, moving to Tar. No, I was going to propose that we, uh, consolidate, and this is into what you all had just had us doing when we looked at Granville Central and, you know, South Granville. Remember we had those two that, you know, that was paperwork that was sent with this? And I was going to propose, okay, let's look at moving Holly, uh, to South Granville and consolidating South Granville with Granville Central. Do we have to do a study to do that?
Cause it's consolidating a school, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but I, I thought with the paperwork that, you know, you sent us to read, you all gave the scenarios, A and B and A and B, you all already have laid that out and proposed and laid out the scenarios.
That's right, that was part of this high school study that we have.
In the Granville Central study, I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
Yeah, in the, in the Granville Central study, we had scenario A, scenario B, and one was to, to move Holly over to South Granville and consolidate.
South Granville.
South Granville will consolidate at Gran, you know, Central, Central Granville.
So, that's kind of, so I guess maybe with studying the closure of Central, those were options that could come along.
Those were options that came out of that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the same thing with, with the, uh, schools, with the elementary schools. We had on the table, uh, the closure of Creedmore or the closure of Wilton. And, you know, with that, I looked at those and yes, I would propose that with the numbers and figures and everything with Wilton, that we go ahead and look at closing Wilton and/or consolidating the Wilton, you know, folks with, um, Mount Energy. You know, I'm looking at all the schools and looking at all the information. So, if we were to say that, we have done a study on that, right? We, will we need a study on that?
Well, because we've talked about.
We have both of those here.
Yeah.
That's right. So.
But I think where Mr. Peace's point is, is a closing Tar River, that's a study.
That's a nice study.
If they're proposing to move Holly there.
Right?
Yeah, I thought we talked about that before too.
Uh, we, it was brought up at the last meeting as a possibility, but we never officially as a board decided that would be something we'd have the staff to study.
So, I, I think we're getting into.
I was going to say, to me, it sounds like, like, um, Ms. Anderson's and my kind of scenarios have evolved out of the studies that are existing.
Yeah.
I think. Um, and I think that's where she's getting at is, I don't.
I was really thinking that the, that all of the documents and the scenarios for the school and, you know, Holly and the, you know, elementaries, you know, then you are looking at, you know, okay, where do we go from here? Unless you all are thinking now, with what we have had studies on with the elementary schools, Creedmore and also Wilton, that, you know, now Tar River is on the table as a possible one. I, I, you know.
Ms. Chair, I, in looking through the, the information about our timeline, um, maybe, I certainly may have misunderstood and some others may have misunderstood, but, um, today's meeting, uh, it says, review draft studies.
Yeah.
Discuss studies and request edits, additions and so forth. Uh, and then the next board meeting on June 7th, review final studies prevented by, presented by staff, request final edits. That never crossed my mind that it was only the three studies and the, that we were going to be talking about.
I felt like when we voted for each one of those studies at the last meeting, that we were pretty clear about that to instruct the staff on what to do.
So, my question would be, how much time and energy and effort would it be to include another study?
Dr. McLean, do you have a thought of that? Time, effort, energy to produce another study where we're at now?
And I'm speak, I'm referring to this, I'm referring to Tar River, I don't know what everybody's talking about.
Yeah, specifically a Tar River study.
It took the full two weeks for this team to be very honest with you with, with what it is they do with their regular jobs and this work. Um, if, if I can be very honest, they hit it right up to the wire because of the rules around attempting to get it to you four days by law before your meetings.
It was literally Wednesday afternoon when they brought the final version in.
Yes, sir. And, and so I know, uh, the work i- is extremely time-consuming. And if you want the quality research, which to me is critical for something like this, I echo what all of you have said. This is too important. I, I need to just say that publicly and I echo what all of you have said. This decision is for reason tonight, but I have to say this. This decision is too important, not just for today, be hasty and to overlook things that I know each of you bring to the table. And everyone has said, let's not forget this, and I have this to offer. I think we need to respect that in the room this evening. And in doing that, we need to listen to what everyone would like to have studied because it is too important. That being said, I think I also have to respect the work of the staff. And I have to say, this will be an overkill if we'd like to close out the school year successfully and get our youngsters graduated and get those E O Cs and E O Gs done. And I could go, you know, I could go on and on, I don't want to do that. But if we want everything done well, and it's not just to do things, I don't want you just to have studies, I want them done well, you want them done well, and our families deserve for them to be done well. The data should be done well, and at the end of the day, it should be information everyone feels good about. There should not be question marks. We should be able to feel really good about the decisions you're making. So, that being said, Mr. Chair, I do wonder if we need to help spend time, uh, just a moment trying to figure out if there is an outside source that can help with this work so that we can get it done in a timely manner. I'm not saying to slow it down, but to get it done in a timely manner, but the, it this time is critical. It's time-sensitive, but we have a lot to consider. What everyone has said, in my opinion, is just, i- it's just important. So, that, that is my two cents. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me add my five cents.
Okay.
Uh, this, this is not my first rodeo.
Yes.
I've done this sometime before. The, the interesting thing that, that we need to consider or think about is whatever we decide to do, we need to go ahead and decide to do it and why we are going to do it. Because word is already on the street and the longer we take to do this is one thing. But without the word on the street knowing why we are doing what we're doing or why we are not doing what we need to do, is another thing. Now, timeline is fine, up to a point, but I don't see, and I agree to your timeline, don't get me wrong, but I don't see how we can do what's being asked, the questions being asked, to get them answered, uh, within the timeline. It's just too much, now, now, you know, we've been here for a while and we haven't gotten to the high school deal, which is a, a whole, I mean, this is the first thing and, and, you know, I can see that taking a while. But it's something that people out there need to know the answer to or when they're going to get an answer to these things. So, I would just caution everyone to make sure that we are going down the right road. And the right road for this is having people understand why we're doing what we're doing. Uh, cause as you change from one thing to another, uh, you create a whole new set of questions, not for us, not just for us, but for people out there. You know, there are, I don't know how many people are listening to what we're doing tonight, but I'm sure some. That's going to have some more questions tomorrow as to why you didn't do A, B, C, D, E, and G.
Yes, sir. Um, let me give you a piece of information and then I'm going to call for a five-minute break after that. I would, just wanted to make sure that we remember that in. I just wanted to make sure that we remember that in May 2019, the board voted to take Tar River and Mount Energy off the table from these studies. So if we move forward, that does need to be rescinded so that we stay in, in order of what we're supposed to be doing. So just keep that in mind. So it is now 6:41. Let's take about a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene back at 6:46, okay? All right, Board, we want to make a proposal to you as far as the continuation of this conversation and preparing for the meeting we need to be to. This is what we're proposing, is that we recess this meeting so that we can go over and join the county commissioners. We would recess this until tomorrow at 4:30. And so that would be tomorrow, 4:30, until we finished up. We would consider the high school study as presented because it's already been on board docs. You've already had a chance to read it. You would bring your questions with you at that meeting. So we would continue the conversation of our next steps as far as related to additional studies or modifying timelines or any of that nature, and any questions for the high school study the way it stands now, so that staff would be able to work on that. So the proposal to you is that we recess tonight so that we can go to the county commissioners. When we come back tomorrow, we will take questions for the high school study and then decide the next steps. I feel like the next step conversation probably needs to continue after the high school, so that we throw all that out on the table at one time. Does that timeframe work for the board?
I make a motion that we do just what you said.
Okay, so. Austin, you got that?
She's got it.
We have a motion by Dr. Houlihan, a second by Mr. Peace. Do we have any discussion?
I'm sorry, but I missed what time, the same time?
4:30.
4:30.
Yes, ma'am. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so this meeting is recessed until Tuesday at 4:30. All right, Board members, it is a little bit after 4:30 for our beginning time. We do have six of our seven board members present. Ms. Anderson is on her way. So we do have a quorum, and so we are now calling this meeting that was recessed last evening back into session. Before we begin, I'd like to point out something. By not looking at the calendar, the attorney decided we should meet on her birthday. And so because of such, we want to wish her a happy birthday. So if you will join me in doing that, we're gonna sing to her. Ms. LeBrec, you're musical. Why don't you lead us off?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
That was very nice. Thank you.
And, and the surprises don't stop there. We have cake, I hear.
Oh.
So, before we get started, I kind of want to outline, just because we are coming back from a recess, where we will be as far as how we'll do tonight. If you remember correctly, last evening, we finished up, we were finishing up our questions for Creedmoor Elementary. And so I wanted to give you another opportunity to add anything else for Creedmoor Elementary's study. Then we will go through those questions again, like we did yesterday, as a board vote to include those in the study. After that, we'll have the Granville Central High School study presentation by staff. We will do your questions for Granville Central study. And then at that point, we will have, continue the conversation around next steps. Last evening, through some of the board members' comments and just some of the questions that were raised of potential for adding additional studies. And so we will essentially go around the table for some statements related to that, and then we will decide if there is action to be taken before that. So does that sound kind of fair and good to everyone? All right, before we get started, it's been requested that I offer a staff member the opportunity to address the board. And so, Ms. Day, you have a statement you would like to make for us today?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson and Board members. Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak briefly this afternoon. I wanted to start out by saying thank you for what you do and what you're doing now. This consolidation school work, it has to be some of the toughest work that any board could do. I thank you for the passion and the care that you have in doing that work. As part of that work, the staff has attempted to bring you the best information that you request. I wanted to speak specifically to the financial work that's part of the studies. As you're aware, school finance information can be quite complex. I take great pride in the work that I do and give it my all to provide the best information that I can. In addition, I work hard to provide explanations and help with understanding of the numbers. Transparency and accuracy are just very important to me. I just want to assure you that any information that I provide, I have given it my all and use my experience with school finance to provide the best information. I appreciate questions and help with this process. It's always helpful to see things from another perspective or from a board member's eyes. However, at yesterday's meeting, there were several statements that alluded to inaccurate or misleading financial information in general. These statements were extremely offensive to me and my professional reputation. I'm confident that the work that I do now and have done in the past for the district and the board doesn't warrant that type of statement. There is a reason that I asked to address you this afternoon prior to the study discussion. A major component of each of these studies is the financial implications and savings. So it seems to me that it's extremely important for the board to have financial information that they have confidence in. So I could not with good conscience just proceed with providing information for the next study without getting, without gauging the board's confidence in the financial information that I provide. I'm happy to proceed with providing that financial information as planned, but I certainly don't want to waste anybody's time. So I, I thank you for the opportunity to address the board, and I will just reiterate that I work just extremely hard to provide the best factual information that I can to the board and all of our stakeholders. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Board members, are there any statements?
Yeah, I would like, can I respond?
That, Mrs. Day. First of all, I want to apologize to you for the, some of the things that I said, if they were offensive. And I suppose from your perspective, they probably are. There was a couple of things I did not compute. And, and talking with Dr. Richardson today, he actually explained it to me in a way that I really did understand what had happened. And so I, I, I didn't mean to, to question you as much as trying to understand what was going on. But that's not important. The point is, we've known each other for a long, long time, and you certainly know that I would not, I hope you know, I would not do anything to be offensive to you on purpose. So thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you, Dr. Houlihan. Thank you.
Board members, any other statements?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Peace?
I would just like to take this opportunity to really thank Ms. Day for what she do for us, what she has done, what she's doing now. And I, you know, I can't really think of anything that I've said to her that would be offensive, and if I have, I would apologize. But I, I think this board, I mean, we would probably be pretty lost without her expertise. Everybody needs to realize and understand that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other statements? Ms. Day, thank you so much for that. Other staff, thank you for your contribution as well. All right, moving forward, we will finish up with our questions for the Creedmoor study. What we'll do is we'll just quickly go around the table. If you thought any additional questions, we'll have Ms. Shave record those, and then we'll go back over those. Dr. McKnight, any further questions from you?
No.
All right, Ms. Williams?
I really don't have any further questions other than, again, on that, on that school as well as the others, just to know how much available land there would be for any additions, should the need arise in the future.
How much land is available for?
What could actually be done there as far as adding anything down the road?
All right.
Just looking at that.
Ms. Anderson?
No.
Dr. Houlihan?
No.
Mr. Peace?
I don't think so.
Okay. Ms. LeBrec?
Not after I opened yesterday's Pandora's box.
Okay. All right, Ms. Shave, if you have my questions?
Did I miss that?
It was Creedmoor first yesterday.
You're right. I'm sorry.
Let me go back over that one more time. Anybody got any questions about Wilton? Dr. McKnight, anything from you?
No.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Anderson?
No.
Dr. Houlihan?
No.
Mr. Peace? Ms. LeBrec? Look at there. Okay, let me read these questions to you. These are the questions we had from Wilton from yesterday. Can we find out how many students are assigned to go to Wilton that go to charter schools? This will be the same question for Wilton and Creedmoor. So our students that are assigned to attendance zones but go to charter schools. In looking at enrollment, can we find out how many kids did we lose to Oxford Prep? How many did that affect with the Wilton enrollment? Can the Leader in Me and other choice programs be picked up by other schools as choice programs? Do we know where students would migrate to and why? Is there a reason other schools have not started the Leader in Me program? How would it impact the success of the Leader in Me program at Wilton if we moved it to another school? Would we need to pay retraining cost if Leader in Me was moved to another school? How many students in attendance zones at both schools chose to go to somewhere else? And then how much land is available for possible additions if the needed, need arose? Staff, are all those clear to you? Any clarification we need? All right, so Board, these are presented to you, and what we would ask is that there be a motion to approve these to go into the study for Wilton. Does anyone want to make that motion?
Make that motion.
All right, Ms. LeBrec makes the motion to add these to the current Wilton study and those that affect Creedmoor. Is there a second?
A second?
Ms. Williams seconds that. Is there any further discussion? All right, see you none. If you're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you so much. Next, we will have the staff present the Granville Central study. You have a new copy of that at your table from the copy yesterday, and so, staff, we're ready when you are.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, superintendent. Tonight, we are going to be covering the study of the proposed closure of Granville Central High School and an analysis of the relocation of G.C. Holly Middle School or South Granville High School to that campus. One thing I'd like to sort of point out before I begin going through these pages is that tonight's study will have two scenarios within. A scenario A involves only two schools, and that's the movement of Holly to Granville Central. Scenario B involves three schools. South Granville would go to Granville Central, and Holly would go to South Granville. Okay, so when you hear those scenarios referenced, it's the two options that were analyzed under the closure of Granville Central High School. So again, the table of contents contain the same elements as the other two studies. Ms. Dubison and Mr. Richardson previously covered the, the legal context. So I will turn your attention on to page five. So Granville Central opened its doors for the first time in 2007. And of course, its construction marked a big milestone in our school system because it was the first high school that had been built in more than 50 years. So it was pretty exciting. And then eight years after that, we added on to it, the second phase, which was completed in 2015, 16 school year. So, you know, now we look at the three high schools and we see, oh, boy, we have a lot of extra capacity, you know. Why did we build those schools back then? You know, why did we add another high school? Well, the decisions that were made and going back and looking at the notes from our board meetings in the early 2000s indicated a very different picture for the future. So the information that your predecessors had when they made these decisions was, was quite different. I was able to research back to the minutes of board meetings, and the ideas started to bubble up about building, building a new high school in the early 2000s. There was a lot of pressure on our capacity in our school district around that time. We had a lot of mobile units at our schools. And our elementary schools in particular were well above capacity. So everyone was looking at this bubble that was coming up through the elementary schools and wondering where are we going to put these children when they get to high school? In 2003, the board contracted with ITRA. You've heard me reference them again. That's the organization out of NC State. And they came in and did an analysis on the, the projected growth and economic development and, and capacity of our, of our schools at the time. And they had a variety of data points which indicated that there was going to be rapid population group, growth and not enough classrooms for our students. So that's what, the information they were operating on at the time. You know, Mount Energy was completed in 2001, and that helped ease some of the pressure, but it wasn't enough. So if you look at page six, this is a chart that they looked at in March of 2003. This was a, a projection for about eight years out that they were, they were faced with. They had the two high schools at the time. The capacity was just about 2,000 students at that time. The enrollment was 2,200, and they were looking at a projection based on the number of children that were in their kindergarten, first grade, and second grade classes of more than 2,500 students. So, you know, it was a, in, a real time for them to act. So at that time, they, you know, there was a lot of discussion about funding, so they decided on building a starter high school. Okay, maybe they could just build the core of the building and then add on to it later. That might be more manageable to, to finance. So their initial plans looked at somewhere between 600 to 700 students to house there. And they finally finished the first phase of the construction, and students were enrolled in the fall of 2007. And they voted on the name Granville Central High School at the December meeting. Interestingly, there was, was quite a lot of discussion about trying to find that name. It was fascinating to go back and read those notes, the minutes from the meetings. But in any case, the school had only been open for two years, and already discussion surfaced yet again about needing more capacity. So plans started to devise a way to finance that. The county commissioner, excuse me, the county manager and the county finance officer attended a special call Board of Education in March 30th, and there was a report from an outside consultant. And again, just sort of this, this inertia, this energy to move towards adding on to the school. And they decided at that time they could afford somewhere around 12 to 14 million dollars. There were public forums that were held in 2013, and then following that, you began to see the architects, the engineers got involved, and so on and so forth. And then construction finished for the addition in the spring of 2015, and it opened, the school added that wing for students in 15, 16 school year. So the expansion of the school added that whole career and technical education wing, expanded the existing cafeteria, it added an auxiliary gym, music and band rooms, and some athletic training facilities. So it really kind of helped round out and complete the facilities. So, looking at the enrollment, again, I was able to go back and, and pull some. Again, I was able to go back and pull some, an exhibit from a board meeting from December 18th. When the school opened, they decided to enroll just ninth and 10th graders and then have them sort of matriculate up through the school. They didn't want to pick any upperclassmen from JF Webb and South Granville. They wanted to let them finish. So, you'll see on page nine, the enrollment summary since they opened in 2007. They started low at 370. Of course, that was only ninth and 10th graders. And then it grew the next year to 502, and then to 615, and so on. Now, you'll note some asterisks. 2013 and 14 marked the first year that our charters, our local charters, I should say, began enrolling high school students and secondary students, for that matter, and middle school as well. And then, in 15, 16 marked the addition of the new campus, the double asterix there. So, since that time, enrollment has remained more or less flat. There's been some dips and some rises. Part of that has to do also with the choice program, which I will talk about, and Dr. Meyer will address later in the study. So, next are factors to consider, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Day to talk about finance and budget.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn. Thank you, board members. So, as required by law, this study must include the cost of providing additional school facilities in the event of such closing or consolidation. In addition, the study includes a financial analysis of each of those scenarios that Dr. Winborn spoke about and the financial implications of each. For the Granville Central High School study, the board asked for two unique scenarios to be studied, and we've included these, as he mentioned, scenario A and scenario B. So, if you look on page 10 of the printed copy, which is page 11 of the PDF, scenario A is the closure of Granville Central High School and the relocation of G.C. Hawley Middle School to the current Granville Central High School campus. So, that scenario is broken out into those three parts, one, two, and three. So, number one being the closure of Granville Central, number two being the relocation of Hawley to the Granville Central campus, and number three being the repurpose of the existing G.C. Hawley campus. So, I'm gonna walk through the financial implications of each of those parts. So, the, the financial impact of the closure of Granville Central High School. First, there are no anticipated cost of closing Granville Central High School as the students from that high school could be absorbed into the existing two comprehensive high schools in Granville County. And Dr. Winborn will go through this later in the presentation. There are potential cost savings associated with the consolidation of schools. So, if you look on page 41 or page 42 of the PDF, it's Appendix A as the, very similar to the other studies. It's that two-page legal-sized document. It includes a representation of the total cost of the school, the ongoing cost, and then the anticipated savings, just as it was with the other studies. It's broken into two sections, and so the current personnel are on the top section with the associated cost, and then the 1920, going back to 1920, school operating costs are on the bottom so that we could look at a full year of cost. So, I'll start with the personnel section at the top. So, again, a description of each position is listed with a column for the amount provided by the state based on ADM or the school. And then the third column is the additional cost for these particular positions. So, it could be state or, and/or local dollars above and beyond what is funded based on ADM. The next column is the total current cost, so it's those two added together. And then the next few columns are based on the discussions with HR and the review of the state formulas tied to student numbers. So, it's an analysis of the ongoing positions and associated dollars after consolidation. So, the final columns are the position reductions and the net person, net potential consolidation savings. So, these financial savings estimates include a reduction of 12 positions and with a net potential savings in the operating budget of $566,976 and child nutrition of $43,390. So, that's the financial side of the personnel, and Mr. Perry will be talking about the human resource implications associated with that. The lower section of that is, are the operating cost for 1920. And so, the majority of these expenses would be ongoing expenses or considered ongoing. So, instructional operating cost would follow the students. And then the facility cost would be ongoing because of the expected continued use of the facility. The areas for potential savings in the operating cost in general are for athletic costs and temporary custodial services. The total potential consolidation savings for operating cost is $153,349. And then, so then in the bottom right corner of Appendix A, page 42, you see the total potential savings is $763,715. Again, that's an annual savings figure, which includes $43,390 for child nutrition and 720,325 for the operating budget. So, to kind of step back and look at that as an overview, if you turn back to page 15, it's page 16 on the PDF, so same information, but just a summary. The total current annual cost are 4.9 million, 4,963,585. Of those costs, we anticipate over, a little over 4 million to continue. Again, just like the other studies, one unique school-based funding formula is for the school principal position. That is one that we receive state funding based on having that school. So, the elimination of the school would eliminate that funding. So, that's the 103,000. Again, that's salary and benefits of the state salary and benefits of the principal. So, the total potential annual savings, 763,715, which again includes $43,000 of savings for child nutrition. So, for, just to summarize, for step one, the closure of Granville Central High School as a school is estimated to have a potential annual savings of the $763,715. So, the next part is this, of the scenario is the number two, the relocation of G.C. Hawley to the Granville Central High School campus. So, there are some anticipated one-time cost with that. So, there are costs associated with, with that move. There would be cosmetic changes needed to change the signage, logos, paint themes, and athletic facilities. So, there's a schedule for these on the top of page 12. The total of all of those costs are estimated at $120,000. Again, those are one-time costs. In addition, if a shuttle was used to assist with the distance from Creedmoor to the potential new Hawley location on Sanders Road, the cost is estimated at $14,000 annually. And Dr. Winborn will discuss that, the transportation part in more detail a little bit later in the presentation. So, that, so there's a, there's cost, so the 120,000, and then the $14,000 of cost associated with the second part of the scenario, which is relocating G.C. Hawley to the Granville Central campus. The third part of the scenario is the impact of repurposing the Hawley campus. So, these costs would greatly depend on the board's decision on the use of the facility. But as a reference, the plant operation costs for the existing Hawley facility are included. So, the total cost of plant operations for the 1920, so we're looking at a full fiscal year, were $181,291. So, based on the same methodology that we've used in the past, if we consider that 25% of those costs would be ongoing, if we maintain the building but don't have students in that building, the potential savings would be $135,968. And then, the last page of the study, if you want more detail, the very last page of the study includes a more, a little bit more of a detail of those, of those costs for Hawley. So, and I just make a note, dependent on the purpose of the building, there may be other financial implications, such as if it was rented or it was a greater amount of use or, you know, that kind of thing, including maybe even changes to the structure of the building could have an additional financial implication depending on what the board decided with that building. So, that's a lot of information. So, there's a summary on that on page 13, is page 14 of the PDF. So, to summarize, the three different steps in this scenario. The potential recurring savings from the closure of Granville Central High School, $763,715. The additional cost, number two, the additional cost for relocating Hawley to the Granville Central campus, $120,000 of one time, and $14,000 recurring for the shuttle. And then the third part, the potential savings in plant operation costs of not housing students at G.C. Hawley, $135,968. So, to help navigate that one time versus the recurring cost and pluses versus minuses, we've included an analysis of scenario A over time so that you could kind of see this. So, it varies by year based on whether it was a one-time cost or it's a recurring savings. So, the year one potential savings is $765,683. The year two potential savings is $885,683, and all future years would be $885,683. And so, the difference between the years is based on, because you would have one-time costs. And so, that's all of those parts of that scenario A added together over those costs. And then, I would just note that, that there's a couple of bullets under there as far as how much is child nutrition, because that's important, because that is a whole separate fund that is accounted for, as well as, I just, as we talked about last night, I would remind the board that we're using fund balance of $635,000 and have positions paid from limited time, one-time federal funds of $912,000. So, these savings could be used to solve those existing financial issues. So, now, that was a whole, a mouthful, but moving on to scenario B. So, scenario B has four parts. So, scenario B is the closure of Granville Central High School and the relocation of South Granville High School to the Granville Central High School campus, and then the relocation of G.C. Hawley Middle School to the current South Granville High School campus. So, that scenario is broken out into those four parts. Closure of Granville Central, which we've already discussed that part, two, relocation of South Granville High School to Granville Central campus, relocation of Hawley to the South Granville campus, and then the fourth is repurpose of the existing Hawley campus, which we've talked about, that was in scenario A as well. So, I'm gonna walk through each part. So, the financial impact of the closure of Granville Central is the same as it was in scenario A. So, that's, that appendix one, and there are no potential, no anticipated cost of closing Granville Central because those students could be housed within our existing comprehensive high schools. But there are potential recurring cost savings. And that, just as a reminder, the total is $763,715 with $43,000 being for child nutrition. And again, those are ongoing savings, recurring savings. So, the next part of the scenario is, is different. That's the, that is the relocation of South Granville High School to the Granville Central High School campus. And so, there are some anticipated one-time costs associated with cosmetic changes needed to change signage, logos, paint themes, and athletic facilities. So, there's a schedule for these estimated one-time costs on the top of page 16. So, the total of those one-time costs are $120,000. So, that's similar to what was in scenario A, moving a school into Granville Central and changing the color, cosmetic color themes and that kind of thing, signage. Then, if a shuttle was used to assist with the distance from Creedmoor to the potential new South Granville location on Sanders Road, the cost is estimated at $14,000 annually, same, same thing as we saw in scenario A, that shuttle, that may or may not be something that you choose to do, but we wanted to include that as what that cost would be. Then, there is also an anticipated recurring cost of $8,482 for a part-time child nutrition position. Because based on proximity, we're currently sharing a position between South Granville and Granville Early College High School, and if we moved that person to, they were no longer where South Granville is, they're now where Granville Central is, we would need to hire an additional part-time person, Ms. Creep assures us, to handle the child nutrition part. So, that's a cost recurring, 8,482. In addition, I just, I have a note here that the Granville Central High School campus does not currently have a track or tennis courts. So, the estimated cost of adding those facilities is 800,000. But the addition of these facilities is just included as a note because, you know, it's not worked into the overall numbers because that would be a board decision about whether you would choose to do that or not. But that, please do note that. Okay. So, the third part of the scenario is moving G.C. Hawley Middle School to the South Granville High School campus. So, there would be cost associated with cosmetic changes with signage, logos, and athletic facilities. So, these rebranding one-time costs are 175,000, a little bit more extensive than the, the cost at Granville Central High School. So, that would be a cost of, one-time cost of 175,000. The fourth part, good news, same as the scenario A. So, it, as a reminder, again, it would just greatly depend on what the board's decision is about what the use of the existing Hawley facility. But based on maintaining the building without students, the estimated recurring cost savings would be 135,968. So, to summarize, page 19 is page 20 of the PDF. The potential recurring savings from the closure of Granville Central, 763,715, a recurring savings. The potential additional cost for relocating South Granville to Granville Central is a one-time of 120,000, and then the cost of the, running a shuttle from Creedmoor to that Granville Central location would be 14,000 recurring. And then, the cost for that additional part-time child nutrition position, 8,482. The potential additional cost for relocating Hawley to South Granville campus is 175,000 one-time. So, the potential savings in plant operation cost of not housing students at Hawley is 135,968 recurring. So, to, again, to help navigate between these one-time versus the recurring cost, that analysis underneath is the scenario B over time. So, it varies by year based on the one-time cost. But the year one is a potential savings of 582,201, because it's net with those one-time costs that we would have. The year two savings, 877,201, and then all future years would be 877,201. Again, I just point out that these financial totals do not include, they do not include that potential cost of 800,000 for track and tennis courts. Again, just a reminder that, that there are, the budget proposal did include use of fund balance and that one-time federal funds of 912,000, use of fund balance 635,000. So, any of these savings from any of these fund, funds, studies could be used for those financial situations. So, I will now turn it over to Jamar Perry for HR.
We'll talk briefly about the human resources aspect of the study. Again, just as we mentioned yesterday, NCDPI allot teaching positions based on the average daily membership, and that's based on the day 20 count of students that have enrolled. Funding for high school teaching staff is a little bit different than it is for elementary. For grades nine, there's a one teacher for every 26 and a half students and one teacher for every 29 students in grades 10 through 12. As noted in the chart below, you'll notice that there are a number of positions at Granville, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's not on this chart. But there are a number of positions at the high school level. We do have curriculum, excuse me, career and technical education positions, CTE positions that are funded separately, just as we do with the exceptional children's program. Any staffing outside of the state allotment for ADM, CTE, and EC are paid using local dollars, with the exception of JROTC, which is partially funded through the actual branch of service and the state or local funding source. Administrative and non-instructional staff, while also a part of the, basing part on ADM is calculated. is calculated, uh, depending on the type of position. Of course, there's one principal at the school, and that's funded by, um, the, the, by the state. And there's one, as noted, one principal at G C H S. Assistant principal, NCDPI provides one ten-month assistant principal for every nine hundred and eighty-five students. Uh, currently, the school has two assistant principals. As far as with our council, that funding is the same as it was yesterday when we talked about the elementary students with two hundred and ten, uh, students for instructional support. Uh, Granville Central High School has two school counselors. School-based classified staff, uh, which make up our teacher assistants, office staff, custodians, and deans of students are based, uh, on the average, overall ADM of the district. Uh, Granville Central has one receptionist, a bookkeeper, data manager, and secretary, tech secretary for a total of four clerical positions. Uh, as far as additional classified staff, there's one dean of student and one virtual lab facilitator. Uh, the campus currently has three custodians. Uh, and these positions would be eliminated as custodians from the schools that relocate to this campus would serve that campus. All right. Uh, merging, uh, Granville Central with the other two high schools would reduce the number of staff needed, um, at the school by eliminating the following positions. So, you would eliminate one principal position, uh, the two assistant principals, three clerical positions, two classified school-based positions, three custodians, and one child nutrition. The individuals currently in these positions would be reassigned to schools throughout the district and caused by attrition, uh, that occurs naturally, uh, with, uh, other sites. Uh, all positions such as teachers, counselors, and assistants, uh, would follow the students, as with the ADM, to the two remaining high schools. So, at this time, we'll turn over to the next section, which is curriculum and instruction.
Good evening. Granville Central is a comprehensive high school. And aside from the general course offer, offerings in the core areas, it also allows students to take courses in the arts that include art, band, and chorus, Spanish, advanced placement, and career and technical education. Students are also able to participate in the career and college promise at the community college. The following, Granville Central is considered a, one of our choice schools. It is one of our choice high schools in the areas of, um, science, technology, engineering, and math program. And this is funded, staffed primarily through the CTE program. And the chart below shows the number of students, um, who attend Granville Central High School that are choice students and the schools, um, the two high schools where they are coming from, starting back from the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. The next chart, um, looks at the demographic makeup of the school of the three, um, comprehensive high schools. And you can see here, we have broken this chart down by ethnicity, economically disadvantaged, um, students. Those are students who receive free or reduced lunch. Um, academically gifted students, our exceptional children's program. And there are two, um, columns here, two lines here. One is the total, um, student, um, E C P population at the school. And then, the other is the total E C P, E C P population that is self-contained, um, located at the school. So, that's the difference between those two breakdowns. And then, we also see our English learners and our students who, um, have a five oh four and our students who are identified McKinney-Vento. Our C T, CTE course offer, offerings, um, based on the CTE career clusters, education programs are compared to the two comprehensive high schools you, um, below. Also, the link that is included in here, you can find a complete guide to our, um, registration bulletin that will provide a complete listing of all of our course offerings at our traditional high schools, as well as Early College and Granville Academy. So, this next chart just kind of gives you an overview of the core, the career cluster areas and the number of courses that are taught in those areas, um, at each one of our high schools. Whether business and finance and marketing, computer science and information technology education, family consumer sciences, health sciences, trade, technology, engineering, and industrial education. Currently, student elective choices are primarily limited to the CTE program offerings, physical education offerings, and a limited number of offerings in the arts, world languages, and advanced placements. The possible merger of students from Granville Central High School with the two other schools will increase efficiency, allow more opportunities to expand elective course offerings. Additionally, it will eliminate the need for multiple combination sections of some courses, such as honors and AP students or non-honors and honors students in the same class. Some of the expanded course offerings could include the following, the following areas: world languages, the arts, career and technical, I'm sorry, college and career promise, other electives, also more advanced placement courses, and international baccalaureate program could also be included, um, with the expansion, with the consolidation of, of schools. And this last chart talks about how the school has performed over time. Um, and this chart goes back to two thousand fourteen. And as you can see, the school has exceeded E V O S growth and has maintained a C average, um, a high C average, um, throughout the time of, um, since two thousand fourteen.
I'm gonna turn it over now to Dr. Wimborn.
Thank you, Dr. Mark. I'm gonna cover, uh, infrastructure and operations. So, the decision to close Granville Central High School and then relocate students under scenario A or B definitely needs to sort of take into consideration the size and capacity of the facilities at the two high schools being considered. So, you see here, um, Granville Central High School and South Granville are compared with their acreage of the campus, their total square footage, their optimal capacity, and the years built. That's just some reference points for you to consider. So, you know, the reason that J F Webb is not included in this chart is because J F Webb is not being considered for, uh, any changes in this study. So, the only other additional remodeling or construction that would need to occur are the ones that Ms. Day spoke about. You will notice that the cost to sort of redoing the signage and the cosmetic work at South Granville is higher than it is at Granville Central, and that's just because of the inventory that we took, the number of exterior signs, their design. Um, also, South Granville High School, of course, virtually all of it is painted, um, in that, um, blue color. That is the school's color, um, so that would require quite a bit of, of adjustment. Also, as Ms. Day said, Granville Central High School does not have any tennis courts, and it does not have a track. So, that's something just to, to remember. And she, um, referenced the potential estimates of cost there. Now, transportation. So, again, I'm gonna use baseline data from two thousand nineteen, twenty. That's pre-pandemic, um, when we sort of had more stable numbers. Um, you can see the total ridership and the total number of buses and the daily miles that were traveled. So, the total ridership is eleven hundred and sixty. We had twenty-eight buses serving all, all of our, uh, these four schools. This includes the middle school. And almost two thousand miles traveled. So, the next page, page thirty-one on the handout, removes Granville Central High School and gives you an idea of what we would need. Notice that the number of buses does not change. Now, again, these figures are based on our current enrollment and the current location of our, where our students live. So, this could change a year out. Diffi- very difficult to project. But essentially, um, the bus route destinations are shifting, but the total demand on the fleet is virtually the same. Okay? So, we don't see any significant cost savings or additional expenses associated with a shift, um, in transportation. I will note that Ms. Day referenced earlier the potential for a shuttle service, and this was something that, um, board members had, had raised a question about, because we know that there are many car riders that, um, travel to either Granville Central, excuse me, G C Holly Middle School at its current location. If the school were moved to Granville Central, they may want to take advantage of a shuttle that would run from Creedmoor to take children up to the middle school. Just a simple shuttle service from a single stop. Likewise, if South Granville were moved to Granville Central's location, there are some car riders, moms and dads dropping kids off that wouldn't be able to add on the extra commute that may want to just put a shuttle service for the eight miles up the road. And that estimated cost is fourteen thousand dollars per year. That's a possibility. Page thirty-two shows, uh, just some, um, ideas for what the attendance zones could look like. On the left, um, if you'll scroll down just a little bit, Dr. Mark, you can see the current attendance zones. The purple bluish in the north is J F Webb. The red is Granville Central. The green is South Granville High School. Um, we ran, using our Tim software, a potential, um, read, readjustment of the attendance lines. And, uh, you see that there, the red is J F Webb, and the blue would be South Granville. So, it's pretty straightforward for redistricting the high schools. The middle schools, though, is a little bit trickier. Okay? Under scenario A, if G C Holly were relocated to the current Granville Central High School, then the middle school attendance zones would need to be altered. Because the G C Holly campus is actually located just inside the Butner STEM Middle School Attendance Zone. Okay? If you turn over to page thirty-four, I've drawn a green arrow and a star to show you where that is. So, you would have to kind of reach over and grab the area around the newly relocated Granville Central to make sure that that school, that G C Holly's new spot is in its own attendance zone. Um, and we did some, some, uh, analysis of this. And really, the impact, ri- as of right now, would only affect eleven households. So, it's not impacting a, a large number of students. But, um, if Holly were moved to South Granville's campus, then you wouldn't have to make any changes in the attendance zones for middle school. It's only moving a mile away. That's just something to keep in mind. All right, as far, as far as child nutrition, um, there are four child nutrition staff assigned to Granville Central High School. So, we believe that three of those four would need to follow the students, uh, to their schools at either South Granville or J F Webb. But under scenario B, if South Granville's relocated to Granville Central, we would need to add a part-time person, as Ms. Day said, because there's someone there that serves our early college. Okay? And early college is close enough to South Granville that they need to shuttle back and forth and bring meals. The meals for early college are pretty much prepared at South Granville and then taken over. They don't have a full-size kitchen at the early college. That's why that occurs. So, that, of course, Ms. Day referenced that, the impact of that is, is reflected. School culture and the impact on the community, again, this is a very subjective, um, portion of the study. Kind of depends on your perspective and your, your experiences. But, um, we do need to take into account the fact that, you know, moving students from Granville Central to what are now their rival high schools is not going to be easy. That would be a process to go through. Also, the relocation of Holly Middle School, um, and what we do with that campus is also something that's got to be considered. I know that board members have repeatedly brought up, um, you know, the importance and historical value of that campus. So, you know, that should play a big role in this consideration as well. Uh, finally, if you were to move South Granville to Granville Central, that in, in and of itself is a, another, um, scenario which gonna, you, we know will generate a significant amount of interest and discussion, because it is such a, an old school, and it, it has its roots deep in the Creedmoor community. So, to summarize, um, page thirty-seven. So, based on the, the information in the study, the closer, the closure of Granville Central High School may accomplish the following: provide significant recurring cost savings to the school district. And Ms. Day, um, referenced those earlier. It's more than three-quarters of a million dollars recurring. It's gonna increase the efficiency of staffing, which, as Dr. Myrick said, will give our students a lot more opportunities for electives, advanced courses, and, um, you know, sort of expand the offerings. Um, under scenario A, some things we need to keep in mind is that there are one-time limited costs for the cosmetic work that must be done at the current Granville Central High School Campus. And we do have to make an adjustment in the attendance zone. Okay? If Granville Central moves up, if Gran, if G C Holly moves up to Granville Central, we need to adjust the middle school attendance zone. Um, also, scenario A does allow for greater total capacity at the two remaining high schools, because J F Webb and South Granville are the larger two of the three campuses. So, it gives you more excess capacity. Just something to keep in mind. Under scenario B, there are larger one-time costs, because you're having to do cosmetic work at two schools. You know, the signage and the paint schemes. Um, also, there is that consideration about the athletic facilities. There is no track, no tennis courts. So, we would need to sort of find a resolution about that to ensure equity. And again, um, the timeline considerations are, uh, have already been presented. So, that concludes our presentation of the study. Mr. Richardson?
Can I ask you one question real quick?
Yes, sir.
Um, to make sure I understand. Did we discuss, would we, if, if we were to use scenario B, would Granville Central and South Granville become a new high school under a different name?
Under scenario B, Granville Central, uh, under both scenarios, Granville Central is closing.
Okay.
South Granville would move...
So, we would move the name with it?
Move the name, the school would just move over to a new campus.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Board members, at this time, we're going to go around, and this is opportunity for you to ask clarifying, um, questions or questions of additions to the study. Again, keep in mind that this is not the time for debate or statements. This is just time for questions that we're asking the staff to add to this particular study. Uh, we'll go around the table, uh, beginning with Ms. LeBrecq. Had to come back to you at some point. And so, we'll start with Ms. LeBrecq, go around the table. You'll have an opportunity, just in case something comes up after your turn. Uh, we'll go through those questions, again, as a board, and make sure that we decide that that's what's to be added. So, Ms. LeBrecq, questions?
Yeah, okay. So, um, and this might be a stupid question. Is South Granville High School a choice school, or is it not?
It is.
It is. Okay. So, um, I would be curious to know how many students choose to attend South Granville High School?
Okay.
And then, my next question is, when, oh, like, if we were, because we talk about eliminating some positions with the closure of each of these schools. So, my question is, and this is kind of just a one-time question, um, would they be, would those positions be potentially usable in other areas of the district or help to better staff other schools?
Yes.
Okay. And then, my next question is the C T E courses, um, that are currently at Granville Central, would they be offerable to middle school-age kids? Or would they, like, how would that work?
So, uh, to clarify, the C T E classes offered at Central, would they be able to be offered to middle school students?
Right.
Because of the facilities there?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay. Mr. Peace?
Well, I just have one question, really, and it has to do with the...
Can you lean a little closer to the mic, Dr. Uh, Mr. Peace?
The only question I have has to do with the, I was looking at the acreage at, uh, Granville Central. It said a hundred and thirty-eight point five. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was on the sheets that were presented to us when we made the tours as well. So, Dr. Wimborn, that is a correct, uh, figure there?
I can verify. Yeah, allow me to verify and make sure.
All right. Any other questions while he's verifying that, Mr. Peace?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right. We'll give him a moment to look for that. Dr. Houlihan?
I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Anderson?
All of the information that I've, that I just heard and also researched, um, at this point, I don't have any questions, uh, from what I see here and what I heard. Uh, well, let me just say, ask this, because I think you were just asked, you just asked him with regards to the name of the campus or something moving. And according to... And according to the scenarios, when the school campuses move, it says school campus is renamed. So that doesn't necessarily mean just because one school moved to another, or one school is relocated to another, that they keep that name. That can go into consideration of renaming the school. Is that correct? I mean, that's what it says here on, let's say, relocates South Granville High School students to Granville Central and rename campus. Relocate Hawley students to South Granville High School, rename campus. And it says it on both, so it's not just a done deal that the school name stays the same.
Is that a legal question for Ms. Dubison?
I mean, the, the board can rename the schools, right, at any time. So you could name it South Granville, you could name it Granville Central, you could name it some third...
Consolidated decision of each, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
It's the thing like, you know, why that name, why that name? And we consolidate it, let's come up with another, you know, that makes people sort of feel like they're part of it. So that's why I was asking, because it does say rename here. Because that does, you know, for instance, if we relocate South Granville to Granville Central, if I was a student, I'm saying, don't, I, okay, we're, you're renaming where I'm already at to your name. Let's be a part of this together.
So it sounds, if I'm understanding, that that would be a peripheral decision the board would need to make after this point?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. You ready, Dr. Winborn?
Yes, Mr. Peace, I was able to verify, it is 138.56 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Williams, questions?
Yes, I think Ms. LeBrecq asked this question about how many students are out of district attending South Granville for school of choice. I thought that's what you said. I had written that down as a question. So that's covered. This is a question I had. Based on what we have in the feeder schools that go into each of the high schools right now, I would be very interested to know, how would those numbers change the enrollments at the high schools, say, over a five-year period of time, if we were doing absolutely nothing? I would like to kind of know if the trend is stable or if it's going down further or if it's going up slightly.
So what would be the population estimates of those schools?
Based on what we actually have in our lower grades that feed into that, say, over the next five years.
Does the IPSAK study already cover that question? Dr. Winborn?
It took that into account.
Okay.
Yes. But it also looked at, it also looked at numbers of permits and available sewer water capacity and that kind of thing, anticipating more people moving in.
Okay.
But we, we can provide that information based on current enrollment.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, Dr. McKnight?
None.
Okay. Anybody else come up with a question since it's been their turn? So additional questions for the Granville Central study? How many students choose to attend South Granville High School? The CTE courses currently offered at Central, would they be offered to middle school students? Can the renaming of schools be considered when relocating? Eva answered that, that that would be a peripheral decision for the board later. And based on population estimates of other feeder schools based on, I'm sorry, population estimates of the schools based on what we have in our feeder schools currently? Those are the questions. Do, does that sound right to everyone? All right. If it pleases the board, do we have a motion to accept these and add these to the Granville Central study?
So move.
I'm sorry, you said the glory over me.
Okay, you want to ask your question first?
I'm sorry, yes, and I, if it goes back to what you were asking about the transition over a five-year period, would it not also be interesting to see that with these consolidations and the moving of the lines, the district lines, what's going to be the impact as well? You know, for, as far as the middle school all transitioning to the high school? That, that's, you know, because these lines look quite significant. It seemed like Webb is taking up more if, you know, they look like they're going to grow out of this consolidation. I was just looking at how this, and I was just wondering about that.
A lot of that has to do with the population density.
Yeah.
So, but you're right.
Am I correct that they're more dense down south?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
But I did add, how is that impacted with moving the attendance lines?
Yes, yes, because it does, Webb is going to get some more growth out of this.
Okay.
Thanks for what I'm seeing.
All right. Dr. McKnight, you were making a motion. Does that still support your motion to approve these questions?
Yes, it does.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. LeBrecq, all right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right, so that constitutes our questions for additions to the Central study. Staff, at this point, do you have questions about additions or questions being added to the study? Okay. All right, it is now 5:35. I would suggest we take a 10-minute break, and then we can come back and begin our conversation about some next steps. So 5:35 now, we'll come back at 5:45. After a short break, we're at a break. All right, board members, we're back in session. Again, thank you for your work, staff, and for the board for the questions being added to the studies there. And so they'll be working on those, and our timeline says that we'll be back at the next board meeting. The next part of our agenda, this was not in the purpose of yesterday's meeting, but it became clear that, from the conversation that we needed to have, some conversations about our next steps are kind of where we're at. We've gone over the timeline, and so it seems as if we want to discuss other options on the table. And so what I think we will do, how we'll handle this, is we'll go around the table just to get, just a general statement, kind of where you feel like we're at, where we, what we may need to consider. Not necessar, I mean, if you want to throw a scenario out there, that's fine. Once we get all the way around the table, then what we will do is we'll need to make some decisions of some action. If we do nothing, the board already has action on the table. You approved a timeline, you improved those studies that have been presented. If there is something to come, then there'll need to be some motions made to do further work. At your table, you'll find a paper copy of the Board of Education's School Reorganization Plan of Action. You have seen this document several times now. It's been emailed to you, it's been given to you. This is another paper copy there for you. What this does is this outlines the steps that we've taken since 2018 regarding school reorganization. It notates large parts of those actions, where votes were, what the vote count was, all of those items. Keep it in mind that if you choose to do actions that we've already done, then we will need to go back and undo those actions. So at this time, we're going to start going around the table, and so we'll start with Dr. McKnight, just any kind of statements or anything you want to, but there is no good place to start right now, all of your eating, I'm sorry.
Well, I appreciate the staff, all the hard work you've done on the studies. To my fellow board members, I just, I hate getting on this merry-go-round again, and I, I think it needs to stop spinning at some point in time. So I, I would encourage us to, let's, let's try to come to some type of decision and not drag this over into a new school year. I think the schools that have been mentioned and the names and things that have been thrown out just causes a lot of uncertainty. And I think we just need to buckle down and make a decision, and, and let's get through this. That's all I have on that.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight. Ms. Williams?
I'd like to say I appreciate all the work the staff has done. Also, I am, also want to see us come to some conclusions at some point. However, I, in the interest of making sure we're doing the right thing, I have no problem with extending the timeline if we need to do that. I don't think we should extend it too lo, too long because I do think that we need to get closure on this at some point in the near future. And I'm open to any other scenarios. I've heard some batted around, so I don't have a problem with going ahead with another one.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Anderson?
I have to, you know, going through, looking at this work that you all have been going through since 2018, and I'm new to the board, so thank you all for taking care of some of this since 2018. But, you know, it's, I must say that these are hard decisions, and they're hard for everyone. And of course, I didn't grow up in Granville County, but I know this is hard because I recall my high school was pretty much closed out under me before I graduated from high school in Vance County and had to go to another one. But with that being said, we do need to do something. You know, the longer we wait, we have parents and children out there trying to, you know, put, put their arms around, what are they going to do? What are they going to do? You know, and us as a school board, and we need to give them that, at least to, you know, settle their mind as to, you know, this is what we're deciding on, but we have to make sure that it is, is in the best interest of everyone, our students, the families, and the whole system. So I, I think we do need to make some decisions and, you know, so we can start putting us back together again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Dr. Houlihan?
Yeah, one of the things I want to say...
Can you move a little closer to your mic?
Yeah, yeah. One of the things I want to say is that there are other principles that we need to look at as we further this process, and those are, instead of consolidation and save, necessarily saving money, instead, what is working in our school system now, facility-wise, that makes a difference? And if you look at schools like Wilton, the Early College, some of those, there are two things that come, in charters that come through loud and, just loud and clear: smaller schools and parent and student choice. I think we could be going in the opposite direction when we talk about large high schools and things of that nature. So to me, I don't think, I, I am not driven by reorganization and saving money and this kind of thing as the primary issue. I think we need to look at how are we going to keep our kids? What's going to be a win-win for as many people as possible? How many win-loses or lose-loses are we going to have and how that's going to impact whether or not students stay in Granville County schools? It's, it's very complicated and it's, it's very complex. I suspect right now, there are a pretty wide variance between what some board members want and other board members, and the question is, how are we going to do this as we move forward? I think, Mr. Richardson, we can get this done in a reasonable timeframe, and hopefully we'll be able to come together as a board to have consensus on this. So that's kind of where I am.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Land. Mr. Peace?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Board members, I have given a lot, lot of thought to what I'm about, about the scenario I'm about to talk about. We spend a lot of time talking about elementary schools, excuse me, and high school. My focus has been mainly on what we're going to do about the elementary schools and how that's going to play into what we need to do with Hawley. So one of the things that has occurred to me was that we, we need to do something with Hawley. Now, it's obvious to me that the commissioners are not going to give us a 30 million, we need to do something with it, where it sits. So we need to move it. And I think if we moved it to Tar River and moved the stu, the students' population from Tar River to Mount Energy and Creedmoor, closed Wilson, used, sell it, used the funds to refurbish Tar River to Hawley Middle School. And whatever we do, you know, the question then to my, in my mind comes up to be, what do we do with the 30 acres or 29.5 where Hawley sits? I don't know how the school system came to own it, but I, from what I can understand, it, it originally belonged to farmers, African-American farmers in that community. So that's, that's sort of where I am with this. I think, when you think, when I think about what's the system is going to be like once we've closed and repurposed or whatever we do, how many students are we going to lose as a result of it and how that's going to affect our bottom line? And I think the least amount of disruption we can do this without causing, the better off we're going to be down the road. Now, I know there, there's been a lot of talk recently about closing a high school. Well, the bottom line is, I'm going to oppose it because I don't see the benefit it's going to be over the long haul. That's all I got to say right now. I think...
Thank you, Mr. Peace. Ms. LeBrecq?
So I guess my sort of question is, so there was the, the task force, right, the strategic thinking that came up with different scenari, was it the strategic thinking or which, which, whatever task force it was that came up with potential scenarios and spitballing and that sort of thing? I guess what I'm looking for is, so Mr. Peace has his suggestions, Ms. Anderson mentioned that she has hers. I have some, you know, some ideas as well, and I'm sure, you know, everybody else around, around us has different ideas. What I'm sort of not seeing is, I feel like everybody's kind of like holding their ideas close to the vest, and we're not sharing that. And I feel like that's no way to move ahead because it's really frustrating whenever you're sitting here and you're sitting in your living room and you're going through all the data and you're thinking about X, Y, and Z, and you go, gosh, this is the most amazing idea in the entire world. And then you, you know, show up and people start shooting holes in it, and then you don't know whether it's a good idea, a bad idea, if there's a way to fix it, a way to improve it, or whatever. And so I feel like what's happening is we're just kind of all coming up with our own scenarios, but there's no collective conversation about, you know, okay, this is a, this, you know, Plan A is a really good plan, however, these are the problems with it. How could we potentially fix that and make that a really good plan? Plan B is another really good plan. You know, what are the areas that we could improve on that plan? And that might have happened in the Strategic Task Force, but the problem is, is I don't see us as an entire board having that process where we can move forward together and come up with something that we can all agree with at the end of this. I feel like June 30th is going to come, which is a deadline I'm perfectly fine with, as long as we can all sit in a room and discuss all the possible scenarios together as a group and say, this I'm comfortable with, this I'm not comfortable with. And we need to be okay with the fact that, you know, if I pull up an idea, like, you know, the bombshell that I dropped yesterday... know, the bombshell that I dropped yesterday, and I say, okay, this is what I have as an idea, y'all put some bullet holes in it. You know, tell me what I wasn't thinking about in my bedroom at 6:00 in the morning by myself, you know what I mean? Like, what was I not thinking of? Like, that's what makes us a good team is because we're all coming from different walks of life, different experiences, different ways to think about stuff, you know? And so, that's kind of where I'm at at this point. Like, I just don't feel like we're at a, like, we're going down the road, going through the motions, going through what the process is, but we're not actually coming up with, like, a group thought together to present to the community and say, we are all 100% in agreement with this, and we feel confident, and here are the good things about it, and so that's where I'm at.
Okay. All right. Board members, do you have clarifying questions to another board member? Maybe something you just heard that you want to clarify?
I want to clarify your idea yesterday-
Can you get a little closer to your mic? Sorry.
Your idea yesterday with regards to this new, it was great, but I, you know, I'm looking at a structured process that I've sort of, you know, sort of been brought up in, and I'm like you, we have got to get from A to B. And one of the scenarios talked about repurposing of Holly. You just mentioned it, Mr. Peace, and you know, you mentioned it too. Repurposing, to me, we have to go ahead and say, okay, let's make a decision. High school, elementary school, go here, go there, relocate here, relocate there, makes that decision, but we know that some of those locations has to be repurposed, and then that will be the next step where I would say, I'm with you with the repurpose, but first, I got to get in myself, what are we gonna do with this, you know, we have to close, and someone, you also mentioned, Mr. Peace, we just attended the Board of Commissioners session last evening, sitting there fighting for funds to keep teachers, and we're over 100 less. You know, we got other things to fight on, and this is one, but if we don't get some money in here for these teachers, we are not gonna even have to have a high school anyway because the teachers are gonna be gone out, you know, so it's so many different things on the table. We got to look at getting funds from the commissioners to keep us, losing people to charter schools, that's losing money to keep in the school system. So, it's a catch-22 on all ends that we're running up against here, but if we, if the decision is, you know, because of the loss of, you know, the capacity of the schools and the loss of the students, we're gonna have to get some funds by closing a couple of schools, and I know Mr. Peace was saying, I don't even see why we need to, but the Board of Commissioners is gonna sit there and say, well, I'm sorry, this is all you're getting. So, it is a catch-22 situation and, but if we have to do something and you, we have this deadline, then what I'm seeing, or what I am saying or putting on the table, we do have to make some decisions. You know, are we going to close a, a elementary school? I, I have looked at that, and I would have a recommendation. Are we going to close a high school? I have looked at that. Is that a decision, that we have to do that? Because Mr. Peace just said, I don't really think we should close a high school. Is it on the table that we all agree that we need to close a high school and an elementary school, or is that still up for debate?
Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Let me just clear a couple of things, a couple of things here.
Yeah, please.
Number one is, when I talked about Holly, I think this board probably feel like I do it, that we can't afford to spend money that we don't have to rebuild it, repurpose it, whatever.
I agree. Yes.
So, if I, I think if you voted up this board to close Holly, we would probably be able to do that.
Uh-huh.
So, then, you know, for my concern, I'm talking about technically closing two schools, Holly and, and Mount, and Wilton, repurposing Tar River. That was the scenario I gave as it relates to elementary schools, and doing what we need to do at Holly, which is, which is the problem really, because it's beyond repair in terms of getting the fund to do it.
Right.
And we need to do something with those students there that have a, a good program there, just starting IB program or working on it. They are doing ex-, well, they're doing well. So, I by no means, as, as much as I, I would like to see it stay open, I, I realize that we reached the point where that's not gonna happen. So, my, my, in my scenario, the next steps were to move it, which would include closing Wilton, using the funds to pay for it, repurposing Tar River because we don't have the funds to do any of that unless we close something and sell something.
That's true. Let me just mention one thing that you just mentioned about going from, you know, we do, we do know that Holly has to relocate, and when, and I, and I don't like to, I don't want the children to take this word, "close." We're relocating the children from that building to another facility, but if I remember correctly, I thought I heard someone say that there were costs in putting middle school in an elementary because of the layout, you know, of the smaller, you know, bathrooms and all of that. That was at a meeting, that there, you know, there were extra costs that I don't think we have even looked at for moving a middle school to an elementary, which I think is why we were looking at the high school, if I recall correctly.
You're correct that furniture as well as just plumbing type issues would be cost associated with switching those schools over. And I believe, and if I'm incorrect about this, the plumbing roughly $5 million is what we heard for Tar River to begin with, and then you're looking at furniture, and then you're looking at athletic facilities there on the property. And that came from the architectural study that we commissioned by Ms. Peel, who did the Holly study as well.
Okay, so may I ask a question? Are we doing this now? Is that what this is gonna happen today? Like, that would be great.
Are we doing-
If we're just all, can we just like throw all our di-, our ideas out there so that we know where we're going at this point? Can we use the whiteboard and put scenario A, B, C? Can we do that, or can we-
It's the pleasure of the board, but to-
I mean, I know it's a-
To start that action, then you're going to have to pause some actions. Does that make sense?
I guess. I just, I guess I'm just looking at it from, like, I'm all about, I just-
So, so this would be my, can I ask a clarifying question?
We're just, we're talking about it, and I'm a much more of a visual person.
Yeah.
So, like, I'm having a hard, like, I'm having to write this down. Okay, close Holly and Wilton, move Holly to Tar River, disperse Wilton. Okay, so that's scenario A. Okay, so what's B? You know what I mean? Like, but I need to see it, and then we, like, I feel like we need to have a roundtable discussion about each of these scenarios.
So, can I ask, just to clarify, and I'm not trying to be smart when I ask this-
Yeah, no, please, please.
I, I thought that's what we were, did the last meeting, when we came, when we were supposed to bring scenarios.
Right, and so, but it seems to me that there have been new potential scenarios that have arisen since then that not necessarily contradict the studies that have been done, but I guess what I don't want to see happen is we get to June 30th and we're spending seven to eight hours in a room debating all of this stuff then, when we could be more proactive and working these all out together prior to.
Okay. So, I guess to head down that route, I feel like the board would need to kind of give a consensus that that's what we want to do.
What she just said about-
Ms. Chair, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we was involved, Ms. Anderson was asking me some questions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I need to clarify-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Before we move on.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it had to do with paying for the move, if we relocated Holly to Tar River, you talked about the cost.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
And involved in that scenario, I talked about selling Wilton, which, which tax valued around $8 million, and that should, if we sell that, that should clear, clear enough funds to repurpose Tar River for a middle school. I mean, that, that was my, I just wanted to finish my rationale before I say what I said.
I apologize.
I'm sorry.
I'm finishing it.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. So, again, consensus of the board, do we want to visually sit down and talk about more scenarios? How, how do we want to proceed?
I know, I, everybody must have laid out some plan of what you think, right? And I think if, like you said, if everybody just put their plan of action, and then we just gonna have to narrow it down to the best of the best, you know?
I agree. I think if we laid out what we think right now, and for some of us, what are non-negotiable, and just say what they are and, and go from there. I just, I mean, we've got the time to do this a little bit. And, you know, if, if you want to and others want to, it's fine with me.
All right. So, what I have confirmed is we can, can do this by, the scenarios you throw out can be put on the screen behind us so we can visually see that, and am I understanding a consensus, or is there a strong objection against that?
No strong objection.
Okay. I, I don't want to, okay, yeah. So, what we'll do is we will go around the table again. If you have a scenario, I'll say this with all the love in my heart, for the love of Jesus, please throw it out tonight. So, I love you guys. All right. So, Ms. LeBreck, we're gonna start with you. Should've took the one with the sub in your mouth, is all I can tell you. All right. So, as you describe your scenario, if you can talk, and, and let's be mindful that, let's agree to use the terminology of move students. Let's not necessarily talk about closing schools because we don't want somebody to pick up a piece of the meeting and misconstrue what we're talking about. So, as you go through your scenario, if you will talk about what set of students you would move where, and if there are peripheral decisions that would come after, then we'll kind of list those, i.e. if a campus becomes vacant, that we dispose of it in some way, or we repurpose it in some way of that. So, again, for the public, just so that everybody understands, the board, so the board has, by consensus, decided to go through scenarios one last time of possible scenarios, and then from there, what we will do, we'll have those visually in front of us, and then from that point, if the board chooses to take an action, then that will come to the floor as a motion in a second, we can discuss that. So, at this point, what we're doing is we're gonna go around the table for your scenario, discussions, and, and those type of things will be after we've gone around the table. So, Ms. LeBreck, we'll start with you.
Okay. So, so my, my newer idea would, or scenario would be if, uh, let's see, if Wilton were to move into the building of Mount Energy and create a leader in me, or a leadership academy from K through 8. So, G.C. Holly would also then be able to send their middle school students to either that campus or Butler STEM Middle School. And then my second scenario, and that actually has nothing to do then with high schools, period.
Okay.
And then the second scenario would be to move G.C. Holly into Granville Central High School, and to disperse those two students to the other two high schools, J.F. Webb and South Granville High School. And then as far as the elementary schools are concerned, moving Wilton and the Leader in Me program into Mount Energy campus.
Okay. Now, your first part, am I understanding that's kind of what we've already said?
So, so Matt, so my first part is moving Wilton and-
No, I'm sorry, I meant the G.C. Holly part.
G.C. Holly would be a K to 8. So, Mount Energy would become K to 8 Leadership Academy.
Okay.
There we go.
And then your second scenario?
Is Mount Energy would remain a K to 5, but Wilton's Leader in Me program would just move to that building since they can house all of them.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're, the second bullet point up here.
Move G.C. Holly into-
G.C. Holly to Granville Central, disperse other stu-, two stu-, to the other schools?
Yes.
That's the one we currently kind of have?
Right.
Okay. Can I suggest that we only put up new ideas?
Oh, yes, sure. So, in that case, get rid of those two, or that one.
Just that, okay.
Just that one, yeah. Well, in the Mount Energy, yes, okay.
Okay. Just not to confuse.
Yes, no, perfectly fine.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right. You good, Dr. Wimble?
Just to keep you straight.
All right. Mr. Peace, any scenarios you have?
I just told it to him.
Can, can, just for giggles, can you repeat it for us?
Relocate Holly students to Tar River. Move Tar River students to Creedmore slash Mount Energy. And move Wilton students to Creedmore Elementary and Tar River. Repurpose Tar River for, for a middle school, to a middle school, for a middle school.
Say that, that part again.
After repurpose Tar River.
Okay. He's got that, okay. And the, um, does that involve closing Wilton, Mr. Peace?
Closing Wilton, yes. Well, I say it's selling Wilton to use the funds to repurpose Tar River.
So, this scenario would end up with two fewer schools?
Yes.
Correct. Two fewer elementary schools.
Two fewer elementary schools.
Yes. Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Good, Dr. Wimble?
Well, I did, I think I did indicate that we would close, we would not close the high school.
That we would keep the high, yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
Does that need to be a part of it?
I don't think so. We would just vote down that, we just wouldn't act on that study as part of yours.
All right. I'm good.
Okay.
All right. Dr. Holahan, any scenarios?
Yes. I would recommend that we move Holly to Tar River, repurpose it. If necessary, we could phase in the, the, some of the changes. I would recommend we leave the athletic fields at Holly where they are and upgrade them, and maybe make that a park between, with partnership between the school system and the town of Creedmore, but leave those athletic fields for, to deal with later. I would send Tar River students to Mount Energy, to Wilton, and to Creedmore Elementary. I would not recommend closing Wilton because it is the second highest performing school in the system with strong support, and I believe that if we were to close Wilton, it would significantly impact the number of students who would stay in the school system. That's what I would do, and I'm very open to the idea of, you know, K-8 possibilities or figuring out a way to, to do something that would make Wilton a, a, a school in a school or whatever, but- But I just will say to you, and I just have to be honest, I would not support, it's non-negotiable about closing Granville Central High School. It would cause such disruption in this county because attendance lines would have to then be redrawn and all that stuff. I just think it would be, well, this may, I think it would be a terrible, terrible mistake.
Any other just scenarios?
Hmm, that's enough, isn't it?
Good, Dr. Winmore, okay, Ms. Anderson?
Well, okay. I would look at the relocation of Wilton to Tar River. The relocation of Harley to South Granville. The relocation of South Granville to Granville Central High School. The end.
Okay. Good, alright, Ms. Williams?
I think we do need to explore the possibility of moving Holly to Tar River. I too have concerns about the high school. My biggest thing here is, yes, we can solve some budget problems, but I just wonder, whatever we do, will we create more loss of students and even exacerbate our problems down the road? So that really concerns me. I do like the idea of exploring a K eight possibility. I looked at Creedmoor too, I do know that a lot of work's been done to Creedmoor, it's, you know, in good shape. But at the same time, I look at the student body and some of the needs they have and wonder what the pros and cons would be to putting some of those students in some of the other schools for academics and diversity changes. So that occurred to me also.
Say that last statement again.
Diversity, there's such a concentration of Hispanic students, I wondered if we would help that school by splitting those kids up. I don't know the answer to that, that just occurred to me, that that may be something to look at. I do have a problem with Granville Central being a successful high school at this point, and the enrollment seems to have stayed stable and performance is good. Wilton's in the same situation, they've had good performance, so I worry about what kind of message we send. When we have something that's working well, I think we need to be very cautious in how we deal with it. This is some of my thoughts.
Any other scenarios?
No, not right now.
Dr. McKnight, scenarios?
My scenario is pretty, pretty much in line with what we had already discussed, but just to recap it, I'd move the Granville Central students to Webb and South Granville. I'd move Holly to Granville Central. Move Wilton to either Mount Energy or Tar River. Sell Wilton. Repurpose the Holly campus as possible teacher campus, like with the State Employees Credit Union does that with a couple of districts for teacher recruitment and retention, since we'd already have the land. It could be something that could attract best and brightest. Using the funds from the sale of Wilton to address some of those one-time costs associated with moving schools around, and maybe using those funds to help demolish the parts of Holly that can't be renovated.
Okay, alright. Any other scenarios that have popped up, just scenarios?
Can you double check that for me, Dr. McKnight, make sure I captured it accurately?
Yep.
You got it.
Okay. Alright, so at this point, you've seen what your fellow board members, I'll just go on record as far as scenarios for me, that the scenarios we are studying, I would like to finish completion with the study. As far as Creedmoor and Wilton, I think they could be immersed in our schools already. I think as far as South Granville and Holly, move into Central, I think either one could move, either one's gonna bring its own challenges and its own solutions. My biggest thing is, is I am not willing to keep throwing school communities into chaos every time we mention a school, and that's exactly what's happening. I know I'm supposed to be giving you a scenario, but during our comments, I should've probably told you this. I received several messages over, since last night, maybe you did too. But we have, have once again turned the county upside down. And because people are fearful that we're gonna start wholesale making changes across schools and we're gonna lose teachers, we're gonna lose families. So I just, I'm at the point where we need to make a decision on the timeline we are to give staff enough time to do what they need to do. So that would be my scenario, is that we stay the course. Alright, so at this point, what, we're kind of at the point that you've seen what your fellow board members are kind of thinking in addition to scenarios. I guess at this point, what it would be is if you just feel strongly about a scenario, we'll put a motion on the floor. And if you get a second, then we'll discuss that particular one. And then when we've had a chance for everybody to speak, then we'll vote on it. Again, keep in mind that as you make decisions here tonight, there are unanticipated consequences to that as well. And so we need to be thinking if we're adding studies, there's a cost to that. As we are looking at things that we've already made decisions about, we'll need to work through whether we need to resend motions or not to make sure we're staying in compliance with what we've already done. So at this point?
Mr. Richardson, if I could clarify, your, when you say make a motion, would be to have a study be completed on a scenario that hasn't been studied yet?
Yes.
Is that, okay. And then separately, the board would have to deal with whether to change its timeline?
Yes, ma'am.
To allow for that to happen?
So correct, as far as motions, it's going with if there's something we're not already studying. And if you choose to do that, then we'll have to decide as a board how to adjust the timeline. Alright, so the floor is now open for motions.
Say again what the motions are, just same, what the motion, kind of motion would be?
Like how to phrase it, no, I mean, what is?
So, you've already studied three scenarios, right, or really four, there were a couple of different ones in the high school. Some of these have not yet been the source of a study, like closing Tar River. So if you, so the question is, does anyone want to make a motion to do an additional study on something that wasn't already part of these?
Because in order to close Tar River, you have to study.
Right, I suppose that... Yeah, and the way, just, we'll have to think through which closures are, you know, because we're talking about like relocating Holly, technically not closing it, but, you know, in any case, in all of these, you end up with fewer schools, so something's being closed.
So basically, if you choose a scenario, then we'll work through.
I'm making a motion to approve a study of the closure of Tar River.
And may I ask a clarifying question? Is that for the purpose of using that building for a middle school?
Correct. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the closure study of Tar River Elementary School to be used for the purpose of moving G.C. Holly Middle School students there. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Houlihan, a second by Mr. Peace. Is there further discussion? Alright, seeing none, if you're ready to vote. If you can help me out, we'll do each one of these votes by hand vote, just so we can get our accurate number correct. All those in favor of this motion to approve a closure study for Tar River Elementary School for the purpose of moving Holly students there, if you're in favor, raise your right hand. Alright. And if you oppose that, if you'll raise your right hand? Alright, so the motion carries. Alright. Is there any other scenarios you would like to explore?
Once again, when you say, are there any more scenarios you want?
Out of any of these, does anybody else want to make a motion for a study?
Oh, okay, great, okay.
I'm sorry.
And, board members, I've been reminded that, was there previously a vote not to study Tar River? So, in effect, you have rescinded that previous decision, I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that and, you know, that that doesn't affect.
I'm sorry, just to clarify on that, that in May 2019, the board voted to take Tar River and Mount Energy off the table. I believe I referenced that last night, that's in the packet of information there. So by this vote, you rescinded that, that motion. Thank you for that clarification. Alright, any of these other scenarios that you want to create a study for?
No, I don't want to create a study.
Okay. Alright, so at this point, board, we have an additional study on the floor that has been approved to study the closure of Tar River Elementary School for the purpose of converting it to Holly Middle School. So at this point, the board needs to decide, it was indicated yesterday by the staff that they felt like they couldn't take on one more study with doing the other work that we've already assigned them. And so we need to talk about some scenarios and solutions for that. We also need to talk about the, how we would adjust the timeline for that. Dr. McLean, can you remind me, did we, were we able to get an estimate on having an outside source come in and to produce this study? I know we didn't give you a whole lot of time to do that.
The last time, I believe, we thought, what we found was around 2,500, between 2,500 to 3,000, the last time we used an outside source.
Okay. Alright, so board, in order to bring outside source in, you're hearing the number there. And so at this point, that is not a budgeted item you have approved, so by moving forward with doing that, we would take 3,000 out of the fund balance to bring in that outside source to create that study.
May I actually ask?
Yes, ma'am.
In doing that, I mean, I'm just looking at the enrollment numbers, if we have 582 students at Holly Middle School and Tar River's capacity is 573, Holly's middle school was previously 832, so we're basically creating another middle school at, what, like 60% the size, if we were to do that?
I would believe more than likely, we'd have to redraw some attendance lines to bring that number down and send some students to Butner.
No, but I just mean, I mean, Holly is supposed to be able to hold 832 students, optimal. Tar River can only hold 573, I'm just saying, like, if we're gonna, I mean, that's, so we're looking at making more expansion improvements to Tar River sooner rather than later, if that's the case. On top, on top of the conversion.
The, I would say, yeah?
There was some study of that done a couple of years ago by a building consultant. I don't have a copy at hand, but I recall, and Dr. Winmore can probably help, that a consultant was employed to give some thought on what it would take to make a middle school at Tar River. And because there was some cost to that, even aside from the capacity issue. And so that is something that I'm sure the staff could dig out. They didn't, I don't think they got formal estimates, like from a contractor, but, or from an architect, but sort of had some general information on what changes would have to be made. So that's something that can be found.
Did that clarify or answer your question, or?
Yeah.
I think we, my recommendation, let's just wait and see what the study shows. I mean, you know, there may be things that we don't understand, you may be right, you know? So, I would just say, let's, let's see what the study, study is, tells us.
Okay. Alright, so board, the next action you need to take in order to produce this study, you need to approve the use of fund balance. And if you want to set a limit up to that the staff can use for the purpose of creating this study. And so we would entertain a motion, you heard between 25 and 3,000, if you wanted to put a cap on how much to spend. So we would entertain a motion to use fund balance for that.
Could I ask a question before we made that motion?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Day, how much is left in the board?
Training.
Category, training, and yes, how much money is left?
I'll look that up.
I'm just wondering if we could use the rest of that to help pay for this, and then it would not be fund balance.
Okay. Alright, let's...
I think less than 2,000.
Yeah, I think the last time we saw a number, it was like 1,600, 1,800, about. That's right.
And just not knowing who may be available, you might want to give them some wiggle room, you know, like 5,000 or something.
I'm looking it up.
Okay, you're fine.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up.
Sorry, we gotta stare at you until then. We've already sung ones tonight.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, with the, what we're looking at now as far as doing a study for Tar River and the relocation, I believe, is what I heard, of Holly to Tar River. And doing a study on that, that also include, I guess, I'm not sure how I really want to pose this. And I know there are costs involved, because I remember someone saying, because that's the elementary school and you're moving a middle school there and gonna look at the cost. My question is on timing, you know? If that was the case, and we decided to do that, that means that Tar River would have to take on all of this construction and all of this before Holly can relocate. And so we are timeframe-wise kicking this can down the road quite a bit when you're looking at reconstructions of Holly, I'm sorry, of Tar River, in order for Holly to actually relocate. And my question, well, that is what I was just looking at, there is definitely a time clock that's gonna take us, gee whiz.
Would it be fair to say two years?
Couple of years.
Because you would need to move them somewhere before you started construction?
Are you asking me?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I think I'm looking at you.
I would maybe rely on the information that the architect provided about the Holly renovation as sort of an earmark for that. It was a 24-month window from design to completion.
So almost three years then?
That was the timeline that they used in that concept design for the renovation of Holly. Now granted, this is not as extensive, but it still contains the same elements. You have to hire architects, put it out for bid, and so on and so forth.
So that beginning stuff could be done while those still, those students are still in the building though, correct?
Yes.
So, okay, so roughly 20, two years?
Yeah, two years.
It seems to me like we are making assumptions about all of this without the, I guess what I'm getting at is I keep hearing all the reasons why we shouldn't do this. And I think that's unfair, because we need to see what the study shows, and we need to know what realistically things are gonna cost, what we can phase in, and I just, I just, it, well... And I just, I just, it, well, I don't think any of us know how any of that would work.
Okay, Ms. Day.
Mr. Richardson, Board members, you have $1,168 left in the workshop expense, but there is a contracted services line item that's got 2,893 that is remaining. So the, the total of those two is for, a little over 4,000. And the, that is part of the Board's budget.
Okay. All right, so you have roughly about 4,000 at your disposal. Ms. Dubison suggested to give them some leeway because of the timeframe. So you were preparing to make a motion, are you still wanting to do that?
Yes, absolutely. Motion to use the funds as presented by Ms. Day in the, in the budget to pay for the study.
Okay, do you want to put a cap of 5,000 on it?
Fine, cap 5,000.
So the difference would come from fund balance?
If there is any.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so the motion is to pay up to $5,000 for the study of Tar River Elementary School, using a combination of the two board line items, and any overage going, coming from fund balance up to 5,000.
May I ask a question? Does that mean no more board training for the rest of the year?
Through the fiscal year, yes, ma'am.
Oh, which, the fiscal year ends June 30th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
I second that.
All right, we have a motion by Dr. Houlihan and a second by Ms. Anderson. Is there further discussion? All right, and so again, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor, if you lift your right hand. All right, and all those opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, and the next consideration is how to adjust the timeline, or if we need to adjust the timeline. Based on this, now granted, not knowing the schedule, a outside consultant would have, that would need to be some consideration. And if you want to defer that timeline until the next board meeting, just knowing that that's two weeks away. Any thoughts to that, Board?
Are there any of these that could go ahead with, that aren't dependent on knowing what happens with Holly and Tar River?
Well, I think the Central one would not need to be needed anymore based off of the study. Am I correct, Dr. Winborn? That your thought would be not to close Central if you were doing your scenario, right?
Correct.
So it could continue in it, from its draft to its final edit, but we would still be on the track of voting for it, I guess, maybe.
Okay, I just didn't, like, the Wilton and Creedmore, I just didn't know if they were dependent on this study or if those are separate issues.
I think before a decision was made, they would.
I, I think, I don't know how to answer.
It's okay. It's more just something for the Board to think about as you're deciding your timeline, is whether all decisions have to be made at once, or whether there are separate issues here.
Yeah.
But there may not be an answer today.
All right. So, Board, what's your thought on timeline? Dr. Houlihan, you made the motion to have the study, do you have a thought?
Well, I think that we probably, it would be wise if we make a decision at, at roughly at one time. I think that if we do this piecemeal, you know, it could, it could reflect on, I don't know, I just think we need to, to do it at once. And timeline-wise, whenever we get the study back, let's, let's meet and go through it, and then see where we are, and, and if we get it, how long would it take, do you think?
Well, based off of what our staff did, we had a, a month turnaround. You did, you commissioned a study, you got it back in two weeks for a draft, then you got the final two weeks after that. The only thing I'm thinking about in that scenario is, is we do have public hearing that has kind of been put out there. But this would definitely, we would need to hear public hearing based off of this. So if, if we would push it out until that, we would need to adjust the public hearing dates as well as the vote date.
Well, I think we just have to wait till the study comes in, and then be able to adjust the timeline if we need to.
Okay.
I don't see, have we, have, we've approved that, so I don't see how we could do anything else but that.
Dr. McLean, would it be a legitimate thought that we could get a representative picked, and possibly to meet us at our next board meeting, June 7th?
I need to consult. How swiftly did we get that assistance the last time? Was that a process, or was that a phone call? Because there, to me, that's a, there's a difference.
Yeah.
So, we have not hired someone to do a full, to commission a full study. The person that we contracted with last time was just merely provided information and came to a board meeting and spoke. There was no, you know, official report.
He was a consultant specifically about facilities.
That's right, facility consultant. He was a retired engineer from Wake County Public Schools and SAS. So he just, you know, he spoke to facility and capacity information.
Okay. All right, so at this point, Board, it sounds as if with the decision made, they will attempt to bring us some information back at the June 7th board meeting. And then we can make a decision on how to adjust our timeline at that point. Would it be a fair assessment that we need to just go ahead and cancel the public hearings at this point? Because if we're not gonna know that by June 7th, there's no way to get a report.
The first one is 14th.
14th and 15th, yes, sir. Is that a consensus of the Board?
What option would we have?
I, I, I would, I don't know. To have a, a separate hearing just on this. We originally had split this up into an elementary hearing and a middle and high school hearing, where in the past, we did individual schools. So i- if you so desired, you could do individual schools and stay the course that we're on, with the exception, Creedmore, Wilton, if you did it, I would highly advise you not do it on the same night, because you need to separate those two issues if it's not gonna be all together. So we would add an additional night for that, and then add an additional night for Tar River later, if it got to that point. Let me ask one question.
If we commissioned a study, have to have a public hearing, correct? No?
Well, you can't close a school unless you have a public hearing. You could commission a study and decide, we don't want to do that, and just stop.
All right. So we could add an extra night that we know of right now, for the three studies we have on the table, that, that are complete, well, that are scheduled to be completed by next meeting. And then bring Tar River's date, once we have more of an accurate thought of when that would come back. Or we cancel them all and wait to reschedule them, once we have all the information together at one time.
Well, if you, if the Board decided to move Holly to Tar River, then there wouldn't be a need for a high school hearing.
But, yeah, but you're not gonna know that, yeah, you're right. But I guess the question would be, to me, the thought would be is, is you've got Board members who want to look at that option, so that would probably come to the floor as a motion of whether or not to close Central. So you would need that hearing unless you're just gonna, unless the Board just decides they're gonna leave that study on the table and not do anything with it. Does that make sense?
Well, to, to me, what has been on the table with regards to Holly is Tar River, Central, and South Granville. All three of those. That's for Holly.
Yes, so, but what you would actually do the public hearing on would be what, what school you would be?
Closing.
Closing.
And so we would have to, at that hearing, we will have to have made a decision on a.
Not necessarily a decision, at least a direction.
Direction, direction, okay, thanks.
But, like I said, we could move forward with these three that we already have, and then we could add the Tar River one, once we have a more clear date, if we wanted to keep working as we were waiting for that report.
Well, I, you know, I just, I don't know why we need to get the entire southern end of the county riled up, when we don't know, we don't have a full scenario, because we don't know what we're going to do with Holly. I mean, I, I, you know what we went through at Toler, and, and how tough it was, to, to talk about closing a high school, to talk about redes, redrawing attendance lines, to talk about South Granville moving, moving to Granville Central. I mean, I guess, why would we do that until we know what, what, what we're gonna do with Tar River?
I, I feel like the rile and the community train left the station.
I don't think it's riled like it very well will be.
Well, we really can't decide what we're gonna do with Tar River until we have the hearing anyway, if I understand it correctly. We, we do need that input, so, you know. But we need to know if it's even something we want to put on the table from the study, is what I understand.
So, so I guess the question we need to decide, do we, do we keep the public hearings on the calendar now for the existing studies? Or do we take them off the calendar until we have a better date for Tar River? That's kind of our two decisions.
I think we take them off the calendar. You say keep it? I would rather wait till we have all the information, I mean.
And, and that puts it in more perspective of, if you do these at this time, and then you come back and do another one, maybe you've forgotten something you heard, I, I don't know.
I, I, I think we should do them all at one time. Because, and, you know, the, the other question or concern is, if we decide to take something off the table, then we don't have to have a hearing about it.
Yeah. Okay, so am I understanding correctly, your consensus is to take these off the calendar?
Well, I think the date needs to be determined based on when we get the information.
Okay. All right, we'll make that adjustment to the timeline. All right, so let's recap a couple things. We have asked the staff, first off, we've approved a closure study for Tar River Elementary School, looking at the option of moving Holly Middle School to that campus. We made a motion to pay for the, to have the staff hire an outside source to produce that study, use the money from the two board control budgets, up to $5,000, any additional over those two board control budgets, we would use out of fund balance. And that we would currently, the public hearings would be determined later, once we had a better idea of where we were at with the Holly study, or the Tar River closing study. Does that sound correct? Staff, is that any clarification you need?
Clarifying question, so for the study to close Tar River and move Holly there, would you want the experts that we hire to do this to come up with a, what is the word I'm trying to say, a concept analysis like LS3P did for Holly? Or do you want a general estimate, or what, you know, what are you asking for exactly in that study? So that will help us direct them what to do.
Dr. Houlihan, do you have a thought since it was?
I think it should go just like these are, everyone. Just like, exactly the way these are laid out.
Okay, so no concept study then, just a generalized estimate?
Well, it's, I mean, you have generally provided the cost information that you can gather, right? As far as what it would cost to carry out a certain, in other words, doing it just like this still involves getting estimates of what it would cost. And, and is that correct?
I, I believe so. I feel like the concept study's a little more in-depth.
Right.
Yes, and, and more expensive, too. I just wanted to make sure that if we came back and it only had rough ballpark estimates, that the Board would be okay with that.
I, I think we're having rough ballpark estimates for the others.
Because, you know, the Holly study was much different. When LS3P came and gave that full presentation and with drawings and such. You're not asking for any of that, correct?
Well, you know, well, it might not be the time if this, but at some point, it will impact when you find out about the cost for Tar to take on a middle school. Will that be a part of it? You know, you what I'm saying? All of the reconstructions and all of this and that, is that gonna be a part, that's part of the study?
Well, that's what I'm asking. How formal do you want that information to be? Because there's, you know, we did have an expert that came a couple of years ago, mind you, and so it's old information, and he gave us some ballpark information. So is that good enough, or do you want something more thorough?
And I think part of what Dr. Winborn is pointing out is that if you want to know exactly how much it would cost, that is gonna take a lot more than $5,000 to get that estimate, and a lot more than two months or whatever, so, just.
So I would insert my opinion to this of, I, I think because we're going to have to figure out financing sources of how to do this, it's less turnkey than our others, I think it needs to be as detailed as possible, which is unfortunately gonna cost us more money to get that. But we need to know, I, I think some of the unique scenarios of, of like the bathroom situation, that, that we're gonna have to have somebody that can really get in there and know what that's gonna cost, because you're jackhammering concrete to put communal bathrooms down hallways and stuff that aren't existing. That's a little different than going in and saying $50,000 for this bathroom. And I'm not trying to discourage what we're looking for. I think we need to know as close to possible, because I don't want it to be, we go through the, the point of getting the study, we go through the hearing, the study's presented, and we're about to vote on it, and then we find out, well, no, it wasn't 16 million, it was really 22 million. Well, then we're right back at going to Holly.
What do you, $16 million?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know. I, I don't, have no idea how much it costs based off of, I'm just saying, I don't want it to be a wild jump. And we tend to, that always happens to us every time we, we get stuff, is that we start on this low end, and we talk about it so long that it's done jumped up double the price.
And, and then that has to go before the commissioners is gonna, you see what they said with regards to, you know, Holly, no, we're not gonna spend that much.
So I just, I guess.
Well, I must just be, must just be dumb, but Stan and I went and I looked at that building in detail last week, and for the life of me, there's one hall where the classrooms have small, you know, bath, bath, or toilets and so on and so forth. But the other hallways, if I'm not mistaken, have communal bathrooms. So if, if I'm not mistaken, Stan, you jump in here, one hall, one, one, you know, one part of the, the building has to have that done. My point is that, that what else could there be that would be that big a deal to refurbish that school?
Good question, and like Ms. LeBrec mentioned, that count of students, too, with regards to, will all of Holly's students, or you're all gonna then start sending them different places if this is too small for them? You mentioned the size.
I, I guess we've not given you directions still. I, I guess we've not given you directions still.
Again, I'm not trying to steer this in a direction.
No, no.
I just wanted to be clear about what to try to, you know, gather for the board. I, I'm, you know...
Mr. Chairman, let me just say that when you're looking at architects, that the more details you want, the more it's going to cost and the longer it's going to take. That's just an obvious. Depends on, you know, how busy they are, you know, we might be looking at something that might take a month or two or three to get back the information you need. I don't, I, I just don't see how it could be so intensive to upgrade that school from a middle to a, from a, you know, elementary to a middle school. And it's not like you got to change the size of everything. Basically, you're talking about toilets. You, you know, you don't have to make the doors bigger, you don't have to make classrooms bigger. I mean, there's not a whole lot that you have to do. I mean, everything costs a lot, of course, but we're not talking about millions of dollars.
But we don't know that.
I know that. I did construction for 40 years.
How, how old did you say the information was on doing that previously?
So the consultant that came ball parked the renovation for Mount Energy and or Tar River at around 5 million. So the board at that time decided to sort of take that off the table.
Okay.
And that wasn't including the athletic facilities. And so then the board decided to look at Creedmore, and there was a study for, that we hired an architecture firm to look at the feasibility for Creedmore, and their analysis of Creedmore, because it's, you know, it's, the bathrooms are certainly a consideration, but there's a lot more to it, was, and this is three years ago, so renovation, 2.2 million inside, site improvements, 750,000, and then if you did any athletic fields, that could be another 3 million. So to convert, just to convert Creedmore was estimated at 5.95 million. And that, that was a formal study by an architecture company, LS3P.
Do you remember how much we paid for that study?
I, I don't recall.
Okay. All right. All right. So Dr. Winborn still needs some direction, y'all.
I'm, I'm of the thought of what you said earlier, David, about this not being turnkey. And as much as I want the study to kind of resemble what we already have, so you, you're looking at apples to apples, I, I think in this particular case, you would need detail because you, you do want to know how much money this is going to cost because that's what it's going to hinge upon. And I'm with you, Ms. Anderson, I don't want to get into this, and then we realize we have to go to the county commissioners and say, hey, can you help us out? Because we decided to move this middle school to an elementary school when it wasn't a turnkey solution. When we already have a turnkey solution, that you could move that middle school over to the high school campus and not have to do pretty much anything but slap some paint on it and sand the floors. So to me, this is a bad idea. Tar River is a bad idea, all the way around. I mean, I'm, I'm just, I mean, you've been thinking about the athletic facilities, do you have space for locker rooms? What happens when it's time to play sports? You have to put the kids on the bus and truck them back to Holly so they can practice football? Because you don't have a field at Tar River? I mean, we've already talked about the fact that the land slopes in the back and there's a retaining pond back there. This is going to add up, not just about bathrooms, but now you're also talking about capacity. So moving Holly to Tar River, you're actually losing optimal capacity. This is like stepping backwards, which then would require us asking for money to expand our river to at least match the optimal capacity we already have at Holly. So I just think this is a bad idea, but if we're going to go down this path, I would rather have a detailed report so we know what we're getting into.
All right. Can we do this? Because I feel like we can just sit here and stare at each other the rest of the night. If you're in favor of a detailed report, will you raise your hand? And if you're in favor of a ballpark, if you'll raise your hand. Did I miscount somewhere?
Yourself.
I thought I raised my hand.
Oh, did you?
What was the count?
I got three and three again.
Ms. Anderson, Mr. Richardson, Ms. LeBret, it's a 4-3.
Okay. I'm sorry, I did miscount. Okay. So detailed report, it sounds like. Am I correct?
It's a 4-3.
Detailed report. All right.
What was that vote?
4 to 3.
It's Dr. McKnight, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Richardson, and Ms. LeBret, 4 to 3, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Houlihan, and Mr. Peace.
And really, just so we gave him direction on what kind of report to bring back to us.
Would there be any objection if I reached out to LS3P since they're already familiar with us and might be able to speed it along a little quicker?
Do what you know.
Okay. Sounds like no objection.
Regarding the fee?
Hold on one second.
Yeah, we're not talking about doing any addition to that building. We're just talking about changing it over to make it useful as a middle school. Is that correct?
At this point, there is nothing about an addition.
Okay. Because we were talking about capacity there a few minutes ago.
Now, the, the one thing to think about, though, is making sure that there, yeah, I guess no, no addition, right? Am I correct?
As is, as far as the size.
Okay. Yes. No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering about the fee, if it, because this is a full commission study, I think, I don't remember the exact amount we paid for Creedmore's, but I know that it was more than 5,000.
I would say, um, let's go ahead and get them started to bring us back a timeline at the next board meeting, and if, and if it's over 5,000, then we'll bring that back to the board. And at that point, we'll pass the hat around to figure out how to pay for it.
The ones who voted for it will...
Oh, hey, Dr. Man, Dr. Houlihan's talking for y'all, so... Okay. Any further business? We didn't have any more scenarios, right, that we're going to study? We've talked about what we're studying, we've figured out how to pay for the study, and we've taken the public hearings off the calendar. Again, any other clarification the staff needs? Ms. Dubison, are we in line with legal?
Yes, and I just emailed to the board that previous facility review that we had done, that talks about what the cost would be of converting to a middle school. From 20, it's from 2019.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Any further business related around consolidation, closure studies at this point? Ms. LeBret, any questions? All right. Well, thank you so much, staff. Thank you for your work and for everybody coming back tonight. At this point, we are scheduled, our next board meeting is Monday, June 7th. Keep in mind that we start graduation season. Granville Early College is this Friday evening. Dr. Myrick, am I correct that Gowns will be at Early College? Okay. And Ms. Shaver, you collecting who's going to be where? Are you collecting what board members are going to what graduation?
Uh...
Okay. So you'll be getting information so that you can let Ms. Shaver know what graduations you will be attending in your folders for last night, and you've been handed some more tonight. You've got your parking passes. Keep in mind, we try to get you to show up an hour early so we can get you gowned up and ready to go and in place. We will be doing, there are in-person graduations as well as the drive-through graduation for the district. Is that still the case, Dr. McLean?
Yes, it is, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And we're very excited about being able to celebrate this achievement with our graduating seniors, especially in a pandemic year. Very thankful that they've been able to do that. Anything further from you, Dr. McLean, before we leave?
No. Dr. Mark, is there anything further for graduation?
Yes. I will bring the robes on Friday to all of those of you who are here, and you will keep your robe and return them on the Saturday after the drive-through graduation. Jackie Bear will collect them like she normally does so that we can get them clean and she will redistribute them for the August summer graduation. So your information is on the back of the sheet that you got on last night, kind of gives you some details about where to go when you get there. If you forget your parking pass that you get for an individual schools, feel free to use the one with the big star on it.
Perfect.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say, I heard you say where to pick the robes up at?
Yes, I'm going to bring them with me to Granville Central.
Early College.
Friday night.
Granville Central.
After Granville Early College's graduation. So I'll, I'll be there ahead of time if you can get there.
Also, Mr. Richardson, our meeting on the 7th, we are asking you to come at 5:30, please. We will have our senior reflections prior to the board meeting that evening. So seniors always give reflections at our June meeting, and this year, we're going to start early. We will not be outside with refreshments and such, we're going to do them in here, but seniors will do that and we will start promptly at 5:30. So we're asking you to come around 5:20 so that we can get that right at 5:30. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Dr. Houlihan will be representing the board this Friday night at Granville Early College's graduation. I'll be out of town, so he'll be delivering remarks on behalf of the board, and then we'll see you at the other graduations as well. Is there anything else from board members tonight? All right. Thank you so much for your work tonight, your patience. I hope you felt like tonight was productive, and again, just thank you for what you do for Grandville County students. So have a good evening, and I guess I need to do this the right way, do we take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. McKnight and a second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Have a good evening.
Yay!